Yeah.
Bowerheads, dear heavenly father, Lord, we come here tonight with humble hearts. Please grant us wisdom and discernment as we speak to the issues of our city. May we be responsive to your wisdom and to your words. Please watch over our first responders in Christ's name.
All right. Next thing is, guys, every meeting, we go through this rules of decorum and respect. Basically, treat each other with respect where we're asked to. We may not agree with each other. We may not like what somebody else has to say, but they have the right to speak their mind. Let's be respectful of that. That's all I'm asking for. All right. Now, we're going to go to citizens' comments. First one, forgive me on some of y'all's handwriting if I mispronounce your name. Daniella, is it Swindal? Make sure you state your name as well, or name and address, I'm sorry.
Daniella Swindal, 321 Heron Circle, here in McLennan Chisholm. I'm just speaking over the recordings last meeting. My husband was working, not able to come to the meetings, and he was wanting to watch them. However, he was not able to see the video or the audio. The audio that we got was fragmented. So, I just feel like the city should provide the citizens a chance to see the meetings, every single meeting. So, I just expect today's meeting and other meetings to be recorded as well, in audio, to be a full audio and not be a fragmented audio.
Thank you very much. All right. Adrian?
Adrian Ball, 1510 Forensic Court. There's going to be an item on here for 6.4. I'm hoping that you will all vote unanimously for it. It's in regard to a discussion action on filing with the Public Utility Commission, an application transfer merger with retail public utility pursuant to Texas Water Code, Section 13.301 and 16, Texas Administrative Code, Section 24.239. There's been several indications that we need to be aware of the public safety issue. There's been, you know, there's public hazards with making sure that we are aware, that we can do certain things on a municipal level. But there has to be official filings to get that started. It takes time. Back on September 14th, 2021, there was a resolution that was signed by the, passed by the city council, and it said, it said, "A resolution of the city council, the city of McLennan Chisholm, directing the city administrator to file a complaint with the Public Utility Commission for various reprehensible actions by our city's water supply, causing a danger to the health, safety, and welfare of citizens in McLennan Chisholm and providing an effective date." So, back in 2020, we had issues with boiling water notice. There was an investigation that basically shared that there was some inflective-related information that showed that they have failed to do. They also are not compliant with a contract agreement with the city of Rockwall, which is still active, which is obviously, they're still not doing anything about it. Also, there was another investigation in 2021 with a backflow thing that wasn't done, and billing issues, constant problems in trying to get administrative documents, whether it's logs, and also attending board meetings is an interesting thing, too. They are not being in compliance in a lot of areas. And so, at the end of the day, I'm hoping that you would see the need to do this, and also the fact that it takes so much time to get this step process. Every single council meeting I've come to, I've expressed the time that it takes. So, this actual filing does not take like a day to do. It takes probably about two to three weeks to get through the process, and it's information that needs to be provided to the Public Utility Commission. And so, I'm asking that y'all will be in favor of this and that you will pass tonight. Thank you.
Ms. Steve Ventura, 9406 Biscayne Boulevard, Dallas, Texas, 75218. On behalf of the Trilogy Property Owner MC Trilogy, I would respectfully request that when you consider Agenda Item 5.2 regarding annexation of the ETJ property, that you approve it. The professional team, both Colin Huffines, Matt Atkins, the project engineer, and myself are here to the extent there are technical questions where available to answer those on behalf of you and the community. Thank you.
All right. I'm probably going to butcher the name. Is it Henry Beck? Okay, well, then I will hold on one second. Robert? I thought, yes, sir, I did. Did I say it right? Okay. The K looks a little bit like an H. That's why I was going to make sure.
I was a little delayed. I had to pay a welder to repair 50 feet of hot fence while they were hot riding up down my road.
Oh, gee.
Anyway, I'm Henry Beck. I live off McDonald Road. I've spoken in the last couple of meetings, and I've asked for an open forum with these members to discuss what's going on, not a council meeting, independent of that. And that's what I'd like. So, we can ask you questions and get answers. Can we do that?
No, we can't answer to what you're asking for. But you can put that request in Mr. Donald, everybody?
Well, I respectfully put it in right there. Because we want questions answered about what's going on. Is that good?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. Am I down? Let us know.
I just need to get your contact information, but I'll get that.
You can give it to Britta. Or my, yeah, or myself. But I think all of these people want answers.
Sonia Thorne?
Yeah, it is. McDonald Road.
It's got all those information.
All those information.
Great, yeah.
Get back with us. We'll meet at 7:00 tomorrow. We'll meet whenever, but we have questions. We, to date, not had any answers.
Oh, I can't say. Is that fair?
As long as you put in the request again, you can do it.
Okay.
If I like an answer.
All right, we'll do that.
All right, Robert, now you can.
Good evening. Robert Steinhagen, 304 Pheasant Hill Drive. On January 6th, City Attorney Michael Hala was charged with two counts of manslaughter, not for being in a nighttime automobile accident, as attorney for the Trilogy Development, Misty Ventura claimed last meeting, but for driving his Ford Explorer recklessly at 6:05 PM where he killed 36-year-old husband and father of three, Edward Beltrain, and his five-year-old son, Ethan, who were pedestrians. Ms. Ventura should know that people aren't charged with manslaughter for accidents, but for acting with blatant disregard to the safety and welfare of others that results in the death of another individual. That's just one example of what Ms. Ventura does. She obfuscates facts. City Attorney Hala is as reckless with consulting this council on the law as he is driving a motor vehicle. Take the September 14th, 2021 council meeting, when Mr. Hala guided the council to violate state law. It met with Trilogy Development representatives in executive session for more than an hour and a half. This act is one of the key exhibits of Mr. Hala's legal malpractice, that is, open council members who were present to criminal charges, not to mention the legal standing it provides to the city of Heath in the pending lawsuit against the city. Anyone who has ever served on a city council in Texas knows through the training that we are all required to take that it is illegal for an outside party to join an executive session. Why on earth did the city attorney not know this? At the last council meeting, Ms. Ventura made it sound like everything was so above board with the city council and that they worked hard to come to that agreement together. However, during the October 27, 2021 council meeting, where the development agreement was approved, the city planner stated that the concept plan was the least detailed of any that he has ever seen. He went on to highlight the fact that the agreement says that the developer can change the concept plan at any time they want, and the city has no recourse. That didn't sound like an agreement that supports our city, but one that gets Misty's boss, what he wants most, development without real restraints. It's also notable that Mr. Hala gave Ms. Ventura a platform to guide the entire city council, which included Mayor Short and the current council members, Kipit, Westner, and Tucker, through the entire contract, as he sat idly by as Ms. Ventura gave legal counsel, much of which was to the sole benefit of her client and to the detriment of our city. As a matter of perspective, when I was mayor and facing a mud district on 4,000 acres, we hired an attorney who, like Ms. Ventura, was board certified in real estate law and one who often ran up against Ms. Ventura. That attorney gave us a sober warning that I will never forget. He reminded us that Ms. Ventura is not a friend of the city or its citizens. Her legal opinions are just that, opinions that will always be prejudicial in favor of her client, just as every attorney is sworn to do. It's important to remember that the best attorneys always interpret the law in favor of their client and argue vehemently that their opinion is sacrosanct. It's settled law. It has standing even when it's not true, because they're working to win. The city council was allowed to be guided by the developer's attorney because Mr. Hala, whose practice for most of his career was family law, is not competent to advise this council on real estate law. In fact, if you look up Mr. Hala on the State Bar of Texas website, real estate law is not included as part of his practice area, which explains why, as the video from that October 27th meeting reveals, Mr. Hala affirmed, and at times even parroted, Ms. Ventura's assertions and claims. Never once did he object to any rebuttal that she levied against the city planner or members of the city council. As I reviewed the video from that meeting, it was clear to me that council members, Kipit and Westner, acted in good faith on behalf of the citizens by questioning some of the details in the agreement. What became abundantly clear was that the answers they were given by Ms. Ventura were intended not to provide clarity, but confusion. No competence city attorney would ever advise a governing body to receive counsel from an attorney who was advocating on behalf of an opposing party, but Mr. Hala did. Mr. Hala is not competent to serve our city, and it is time to find new representation. Thank you.
Thank you. Britta?
Britta Jo, 256 Stevens Road, Rockwall, Texas, 75032. After the last city council meeting, I took some time this past month to really think through what I witnessed there and realized. It all comes down to these two questions. What is the purpose of a city council? And what is the goal of a developer? First, what is the purpose of a city council? In the Texas Municipal League's handbook for becoming a city official, they state, "Citizens look to the city council to exercise authority to preserve and promote their health, safety, and welfare. A city council may enact ordinances and resolutions and use its governmental powers for the public good." So, what is the goal of a developer? A developer is a private entity here to make as much money as possible. Not a problem there. That's business. And it's well-known that they commonly do that by packing in as many homes as they can. Anyone in the development sphere will tell you that developers use all the tricks that they can get to get what they want done. In fact, that's exactly why we have city government, to protect citizens' health, safety, and welfare from private entities that don't have that same goal. By all accounts, then, we would not reasonably expect a city council or a city's attorney to be in close collaboration with a developer's attorney based on the reality that their goals are in direct opposition to one another, especially in a city like McLennan Chisholm, whose own comprehensive plan lists the city's vision as being, quote, "deeply passionate about rural heritage, green spaces, low-density residential development, and maintaining country feel." So, what is going on, then? Because here's the thing, I'm all for collaboration and working together. But when I'm sitting through a meeting, listening to your residents speak about how upset they are about this development, and then watching a city council member only applaud after Misty Ventura speaks, the developer's attorney, that does not sit well with me. When I'm watching a developer's private attorney defend a city council from its own residents and try to convince them that everything's above board, I'm naturally going to be suspicious. Misty should not have to be doing that if she wasn't somehow invested in protecting the city council, which makes no sense at all if this is so above board, and in her words last month, transparent. Members of the city council, I implore you tonight to realize that Misty Ventura is not your friend. Misty Ventura is a shark. Make no mistake about it. She gets her clients' results. And who are her clients? Developers. And what do developers want? To make money, often at the expense of your citizens' health, safety, and welfare. And I didn't fully understand the extent they will go to to do that until last month, when I found out that the man Huffines moved onto their development property, right around the corner from my home, is a convicted felon with a record of assault, burglary, and aggravated sexual assault of a child. Now, it is personal. You are in league with people who are knowingly moving criminals into our neighborhood to get what they want done. And I have kids. I moved here to get away from people like that. I felt safe in my home for the past eight years, and now I'm spending thousands of dollars to install ring security systems all around my house, out in the middle of the country, because I don't trust the people who moved that man around the corner from me. And those people are whom Misty Ventura works for. Ergo, it's time to stop trusting Misty Ventura. Two of you and your city secretary are facing deposition in the next month in regards to the lawsuit. You will be under oath to speak the truth, and I hope that you will, because it is not worth lying to protect these people. And for the rest of you on the city council, when you are on a team that's in direct opposition to the people it is supposed to represent, that's not a team you want to be on. It is time to stop trusting your fellow council members who were in the room working with Huffines and Misty Ventura when this development agreement was made, and start speaking up in support of your citizens. Thank you.
David Black?
Dave Black at 1419 Cunealane. Well, I like the people who came. They're, well spoken, I'm not. I have a hypothetical question. Did the city council consider the comprehensive plan of 2021? Those of us who participated in that knew that the city spent some money to get a facilitator and management, to do surveys of the citizenry, to educate the public of the issues, and a lot of time was spent on that. They came up with a comprehensive plan that is great, but I'm not sure it's being followed, or certainly the spirit is not, because to annex in land from the MSF group with their triumvirate development, or whatever they want to call it, it seems totally inconsistent with what the citizens want. And that's in writing, right? And people testifying, it's also inconsistent with what the people want. So, I don't know if the city council that we elected to represent us, represent our views, was misled or what. But I hope you guys can resolve it. Thank you.
Thank you. Holly, is it Chaney? Did I get it right?
My name's Holly Chaney. I live at 3 Sheffield Court in Heath, Texas. I'm new to the area. This is my third meeting to attend. Just for the record, I am completely against this development. We chose this area for the reasons that there were nice, big lots, little elbow room, things weren't so cramped, it was a little bit of country. That's not why I'm speaking, though, tonight. I thought it was important to speak because I've had many positions in my past. I have four kids, been on a lot of boards, been to a lot of meetings, a lot of PTA especially, volunteer and professional meetings. Last meeting I attended was probably the most shocking. Again, I'm new, so I don't know a lot of the nuances, other than I know that this development is bringing a lot of emotion out in the community. There certainly seems to be a divide between those of you sitting in front of me and those of you sitting behind me. I'm shocked, frankly, that there was a board member who interrupted a speaker at the last meeting, mid-sentence, and she left in tears. As a woman, I don't like public speaking, so I identified a little bit with her. It's hard to get up here and speak in front of everybody. That was a surprise and was very unprofessional. Another time, I heard the current mayor, who was yelling apparently at the previous mayor, that I learned during that exchange, very angry and completely cutting him off. This was very surprising, very intimidating as a new person to this community. While I'm very thankful I had an opportunity to talk with you at the end of the meeting, and I'm very grateful that you did apologize at the end of the meeting. It made me feel much better. I just want to remind you, board members, that please be respectful of those who are here and speaking, and especially new people. They don't know the whole story, so any more information that you can give... It's really been hard to understand, really frankly, what's going on. It's also hard to really hear when you're sitting in the audience. I was trying to explain all this with my husband and my neighbors when I got home, and then to find out that the meeting wasn't recorded, I was shocked. Again, I don't remember people's names. I didn't write it all down. Neighbors wanted to know. I couldn't relay, because I don't know, I don't really know anybody here. So, I was really shocked that this was not even recorded. I'm not sure what happened, but I certainly, so my two points are, please be respectful to each other. We're a community. I just moved here. I want to get along. Please make sure that your audio and technical is working tonight, because I think it's important for people to understand what's going on in these meetings. There's a lot of people from my neighborhood who cannot make it to these meetings. So, it was really difficult to explain after last meeting what was going on when there's no video and no audio. I'm not really sure what happened. So, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. It's 6:55. Citizens' comments are closed for the evening. We'll move on to number five, the consent agenda, 5-1, 5-2, and 5-3. If there's nothing to discuss on those, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Approve the consent agenda?
I have got a motion. Do I have a second? Okay, I've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor? Aye? Oh, you're trying to bring it? All right. Show that unanimous. All right. Next thing. We'll move on to Item 6.1, consideration and approval of a site plan for the MFS Group LLC for a one and one-half acre tract of land located at the southwest corner of the intersection of 550 and State Highway 205. Before we do a motion or anything on that... Okay, hold on. Mike, I need to ask you a couple of questions. There is questions as to whether or not the site plan that was presented was looked at by TMZ, that doesn't appear to be the one that we originally had looked at and approved.
The site plan has not been reviewed or looked at, and it's not required to be looked at by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Well, and the answer to that question is, because the Plan Development District that established Kingsbridge, the Office 1 section, which is where this is, specifically says that a site plan only needs to be approved by the city council. And I put that in the report. You can see it down in there. I put it on the Planning and Zoning Commission's meeting for yesterday so that they would know what was going on, because I think keeping them in the information room is important. Now, you may recall that the last time this was before you, the plat, preliminary plat was approved. And that's a different graphic, a different graphic than the site plan. The site plan shows the building, the preliminary plat does not. It shows fire lanes, easements, and those kinds of things. And so, you end up having two separate-looking documents for different activities.
Drew, do you have any questions? Turn your microphone up.
So, they don't have to look at how the things, like how the traffic will flow or anything like that in the parking lot, or...
Wait a second. Are we talking about Poloney? Yes.
Yes.
Let me go back to Poloney. The Planning and Zoning Commission...
The Planning and Zoning Commission did look at the Palani's site plan and recommended And they do require going to P&amp;Z, and they did review it, and they made a recommendation to the council based on their review of the site plan, the landscape plan, and the elevations.
Okay, but what I'm asking, though, I mean, help me understand this. I have two different plans. They're completely different. Which one? They got one, and then two weeks later, city council gets a completely different one. So which one is the correct one? Because P&amp;Z okayed one, city council gets a completely different one, and expects us to say, "Okay." But if P&amp;Z okayed it, why are we getting one that's different?
Okay. Are these the two pictures that you're talking about?
That's it.
Okay. This one that has the heavy, heavy dark here, this is the preliminary plat. It was a separate...
So this one?
That one. That's the preliminary plat. It's not the site plan. And so what this one shows is the geography, the boundary of the property, the easements, the fire lanes, and those kinds of things, that go on this sewer line, water lines, underground stuff. That's the preliminary plat. The Plan Commission recommended approval, the council approved that, and so that preliminary plat was approved by the council at the last meeting. Then, this second document, a separate case, was the site plan, the landscape plan, and the elevations. The Planning and Zoning Commission's reviewed this and recommended approval. And that's a different, that's a different picture, because it shows footprints of the buildings as well as the geography, but sets on top of the preliminary plat. And this one, if you look at the big examples, it's got the drive-through and parking spaces, you can see it. And that's why I put the reference in there, because the PDFs that go into my report get reduced to such small size that it's really tough to tell, but...
Okay. Because my problem with this is we don't want a drive-through. We talked about that. We, in the very beginning of even starting this, we said, "No, drive-through." We didn't, we don't want a drive-through. And that's what keeps coming through to us, stating that this is a drive-through. And we keep saying, "No," but it keeps coming back to us as a drive-through. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna say, "No," until we get the correct one. So I don't know what to do now, because I keep, I keep feeling like I'm getting snookered. So I don't know what to do.
I think I understand the question. At least, I understand the issue. So I went back and looked at the council meetings from 2020, about this. I wasn't here then. That was the year that I took off. The issue was, and I sent the council a memo that's attached to this report, that talks about that. In 2020, I think, April 2020, y'all said you didn't want to have a drive-through because of traffic congestion and queuing and that kind of stuff.
There's just not enough room.
Okay. And so, so what they've asked for now is not that kind of a drive-through. What they've asked for is a lane where you can pick up your stuff that you have ordered ahead through the internet or by phone. There's no queue, at least, there may not be a queue, but there's no reader board, there's no microphone, there's no menu, you can't order there. And on top of that, they've applied for a specific use permit, an S&amp;P, for a restaurant. A restaurant in our GB, the GB zoning district, which is where this is located, requires an S&amp;P, whether it has a drive-through, whether it serves alcohol, any of those things, it requires an S&amp;P. They've made application, that's coming through. But the beauty of requiring an S&amp;P, especially in this case, is we can, we being the council, can make the condition that there shall be no reader board, menu options, microphones, I mean, that kind of stuff. And if you, if you pass that, that becomes an ordinance, and it runs with the land. So Ms. Kiffett's concern was, was that if Palani gets a restaurant, and it works perfectly for the first five years, and he's out of it, and some third party comes in, and then it's Jack-in-the-Box. That, that they would automatically be able to change it from a pickup-only to a drive-through with reader board and staging and stacking won't happen, because an S&amp;P runs with the land. It's just part of the zoning district, if you approve it. And I'm recommending that you do, because this is not a drive-through. It's not Jack-in-the-Box, it's not Wendy's. It is a place where you call in ahead, and they'll tell you what time to pick it up, and you come and pick it up. And the objective here is to not have any of that stacking or interference with traffic or the transportation on this site. It's a small site.
And we can, and we can make sure it's a one-story, there's no two-story type thing. It's a one-story because of Brookshires doesn't need, and I think they've got that in their rules. It's a one-story, you know, facade-type thing?
Yes. The elevation that you have in front of you was the elevation that we presented to Brookshires meeting, and I was at that meeting, and they said, "Okay."
There's nothing, there's nothing to prevent a future city council from amending the S&amp;P or putting in for another S&amp;P that would allow them to have a drive-through. Am I correct?
The city council has the final authority to make zoning decisions, subject to the rules that exist. And so if, if a future council, let's say that you say yes.
Right.
If a future council comes in and say, "Well, we really don't like that operation, because it's causing traffic," then you, then that council that's in place at that time could amend the S&amp;P, they could eliminate the S&amp;P, they could say that the drive-through is no longer allowed.
But they could, they could amend it to the point where they could allow a drive-through to be created as well?
Absolutely. That's, that's, that's because it's a legislative function. It's not ministerial. Like plating is ministerial, but legislative, the council, whether it's you or a future council, gets to make the decision on what's appropriate for the community.
S&amp;Ps, you can tailor them to the specific use. That's why they're called specific use permits. So if you want to put in, and you can make them expire after a year, so that means every year they have to come back, you kind of keep tabs, see how it's going, see what they're doing. So after a year, they come back, and it's like, hey, you know, it looks like y'all actually are using this, not so much as a pickup, you've added a little voice box, people can order, you know, "We're not going to renew the S&amp;P." So then, boom, they're done. That wouldn't give them any vested rights beyond that, that one year. If it, if it does turn out that, hey, maybe the drive-through is something a future city council would want to do, so as that S&amp;P expires, they can add on, okay, we'll allow one drive-through window, or one box, or, you know, things like that, so.
Other questions?
No.
And Mr. Mayor, let me, let me just say that, that the staff has reviewed, reviewed the site plan, landscape plan, and the elevations, has worked with the applicant, and I'm not talking about just me, but our engineers...
Do you have a question?
And our fire chiefs, to make sure that what you're seeing tonight complies with the regulations and complies with the agreements that we've made since at least 2020.
You do have a question. Floyd, go ahead.
This is, this drive-through, the type of drive-through, I've never really have any experience with. So my question is, why this particular type of drive-through, which you're saying technically it isn't, it's just a pickup order? So why are the plans not drawn up like standard restaurants, where you have a parking space to where they can park and the food be delivered to them?
The reason, I hope you can hear me, but the reason that they do this is they're going to deliver this through the window into the car, to the driver, so that they don't have to park, get out, go in. There will be a time when they are supposed to show up, so they can drive to the window and the delivery can be made. And it minimizes the amount of time on the ground for the, for the customer.
No, I didn't. Is he saying that they don't have a space for it?
No, what he's saying is, their, their design was for the customer to be able to drive through and pick it up at a window versus what you're asking, which is, like you see with Chili's and all them, they'll have signs out there that say, "To-go order, parking spot."
Right.
In my opinion, it should be, it's a play on words. In my opinion, it should not say "drive-through," it should say "drive-up window," or "pick-up window." And what Floyd is stating, I would think that it would say "carry-out spot." So that way, it's carried out to your car. But in this state, in, in my opinion, not, it's not a drive-through window, it is a drive-up window. And that's what I would like it to state, because in my opinion, for a drive-through would necessarily mean that you're ordering it at the place, and then you're driving through to get it.
Also, too, you can actually make that a condition of the S&amp;P. So the conditions on the S&amp;P are very important, because that one year, that's just not an unfettered one year to go as long as they want, however they want. They have to comply with the conditions. So if the conditions aren't complied with during that one year, and it comes to council's attention, and it comes back on the agenda, and the conditions are not being met, you can revoke the S&amp;P, so that you can require signs that say, and have specific wording, you know, like you said, "Drive-up," or, you know, "Not drive-through," or something like that, wherever you want, you can make that a condition.
I'm kind of a dumb-it-down person, so a lot of these are big words for me sometimes. When I hear a lane or anything like that, I'm just going to think "drive-through," "drive-up." To me, it's all the same. You have a lane, I'm driving up. I think of Texas Roadhouse, they don't have a drive-up, they have a window. I park my car, I go up to the window, I get my chow, go back to my car, go home, and I eat it. That, to me, is what should be, what we should be saying should happen. Not a lane, not a play on words, as Trudy said, because I think that's what it is. I think it's a play on words. If you have a lane, you're telling me that's a drive-through. I don't care if there's a window, I'm driving through, just like I'm at Jack-in-the-Box, grabbing some chow out of the window. You want it to be right, make it right, make it parking spots. I'm in lane one, I text you my number, and you bring it out to my car. That, to me, is how it should be, correct? If Trudy, what Trudy said at the very beginning was, we have been against a drive-through or drive-up or anything, that, to me, should be just how it is. I mean, to me, it's, I'm very simplistic here, it just seems like you either have a drive-in, or drive-up, or drive-through, or you have a pickup.
My, my opinion is that what they're proposing, even though it has a lane, satisfies the pickup or drive-up standard, irrespective of whether there's a separate parking space, because this is a, this is a travel lane anyway. And it will be, I would prefer for somebody not to have, like at Chili's, because I go to Chili's, too. I prefer for them not to have the parking space, or two, or three, or five spaces, and then go up and get the thing and come back, because that's taking parking that I would like to use for other customers, because it's not just a restaurant here, this is a retail center.
Right. But if it's a travel lane, and I'm stopping my car, and I'm stopping my car, I'm impeding the travel of the lane, right?
Well, this is designed to go around where other cars are going, so it doesn't interfere with the traffic pattern and the parking pattern. And let me also say this. Cameron Sloan, who's the engineer, is standing right down, and I think he wants to say something. So if that's okay with you, Mayor, can you let him speak?
Good evening. I'm Cameron Sloan with Teague Nolan Perkins, the civilian chairman of the project, 825 Waters Creek in Allen, Texas. So we did, and I think on initial site plan submittals, we did have the word "drive-through" in the, in the site information sheet, but when we did submit the specific use permit, we updated that and added "with pickup window." So it just says "retail center, restaurant with pickup window" instead of "drive-through." And then we did add a note in the pickup lane for "order-ahead pickup window only." So, and the, so the intent of, of the lane is just for pickup only. So like, like Michael said, it was just, you know, somebody would call in and order, or order online, and they could come pick up, and that, that's their designated lane to pick up their, their meal. And, you know, for the, for the efficiency of the restaurant, instead of having, you know, folks go and park in a lane, or in a, in a space out in the parking lot, and have the, have the worker go out to deliver their food, they could just pick it up right at that window and...
Okay.
You all haven't seen yet...
Okay. Okay. Okay.
You have a question, Mayor? I'm, I'm good. I, I don't like the wordage as far as what says "drive-through," I don't think that it's like "order-ahead," it's like "unneeded," and then you just do about that kind of thing, and it's usually a lot of... I don't want to say "unn needed debate," but it creates a lot more questions, and time to discuss them, and...
You can make the conditions as you say, but this has to be a true, subsequent to the drive-up or pickup, and the...
Okay.
I think that's different. I think it answers a lot of the issues concerned, and when you look at the graph, the only reason that you're in that lane is that here, it's...
Okay. And you stated that you've got a bigger map that we can look at? Because I would, I'm kind of concerned with how they've got the exit and entrance off of 550. I believe I saw that the exit and the entrance off of 550 was exactly the same as with Sonic's entrance and exit, which is extremely close to the, to the light. Okay.
One of the conditions that, that I recommended to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and that they've recommended to you, is that the applicant submit evidence from TechDOT that they have permission to have the driveway there on 205 where it's located on the site.
Say that one more time, Mike.
550 and 205 require permission from TechDOT to have driveways. Back five years ago, eight years ago, we got permission from TechDOT for the driveway on 550 where that easement comes in that would lead to the Brookshires case. This 205, I do not have a written document from TechDOT yet, and so one of the conditions that I recommended for your consideration, and for P&amp;Z's recommendation, was that they prove up that the driveway that they're shown on this site plan has been approved by, by the TechDOT. And I haven't received that yet, but that'll, I think that'll happen coincidentally with the S&amp;P application as it moves through the process.
Somewhere I saw on one of the plans, it's on, off of 550, and the Sonic, they're directly across from the truck, which never looks good, because you're wanting to turn left, and we want to turn left, and that's how, you know, if they think they're further down, where nobody's hitting each other, does that make sense?
Yes, ma'am, and that's, and that's the way it is.
It is, not right?
Yes, ma'am, it's not directly across, it is a little further south.
Okay, so...
Yeah, it is a little further south along 550, and there's a, if, on that plan, there's a, an access easement there for Brookshires grocery companies, so that's where our driveway will, will come into 550. And the Sonic, the Sonic access is just a little bit further north.
Is it a little bit further towards 205?
Towards, towards 205.
So I don't understand that, I just have the visual that was, but I'm not...
And that's the, that was the, that's the designated spot for the drive-through.
How about, I mean, does it, whether you have a lane or not, does that really impede the business going on? Like, I mean, if we said, "Hey, no lane," I'm sure you're still having a place for people to pick up their chow, right? Just asking. Like, if we said this lane can exist, you would still be able to do the deal, right? I mean, like, I mean, it sounds like the people would still get their food, they just get it to their parking spot, or they walk up to a window. I'm only asking, because to me, as Councilman Tucker said, what keeps this from being a drive-through later on? I mean, because this is the thing that I, we talk about transparency and stuff, and I think if we're being full killer here, that, to me, is just put it out there. Either we have the lane, or we don't have the lane. If we're putting it in place now, kind of means we could possibly make it a drive-through later, right?
So as, as part of the S&amp;P submittal, we do have a, a note on our, on our plan that does say...
But the SUP can be changed from what the city attorney said by another council and mayor later. Could be. So if you didn't have the lane, it's nothing to really change in two councils down the road, maybe.
But conversely, if there is no lane in the country, and that down the road says we'd like it to have a drive-through, play in the way, and they would have it.
Yeah, but then they're gonna have to pay for whatever that is then, and if they're really gonna want to do it. And if the business has been doing fine without it, maybe they won't do it. I mean, if I'm still making bread, and my wallet's getting full, I could care less if I have a lane or not. That's just money. I mean, I'm very dumb things down a lot, and I apologize for that. But that's just how I work, and it just seems like if I can make money with parking spots, the same as I can make money with the lane, and people kind of maybe not want the lane, let's just take the lane out and move forward, and have the parking spots, and go on. Right. Right, but it's still a viable option to just have parking spots. I'm telling, I have never had a holdup at Texas Roadhouse. And let me tell you, they get a lot of my money because I like their food. So I'm telling you, sometimes I can't even park in a spot. I park around the corner, I go get my food, and I leave. I mean, I've never been so upset that I couldn't park up close to get my food. I'm more concerned that my food order's right when I get home, and I'm not going, dang, I didn't get bread. You know, so I mean, it's like, I just, I personally feel like if we're playing words, I mean, we got drive-up, drive-through, and pickup. To me, that's a drive-through. That's a drive-through to me. I don't know how it is to everyone listening, or the other council members, but I'm telling you, I hear drive-up, pickup, that's a drive-through.
All right, let me slow this up a minute and get us back on track. We've got three options. We can say no, disapproved. You can approve it like it is. Or as we said about special utility or special use. You can approve it with conditions, which are kind of what you're describing. No pickup window, or no speaker, no menu board, whatever the case, or whatever. Whether a council, a term from now, two terms from now, can change that, shouldn't be the basis for your decision to that. It's, your decision should be based on what you guys feel is right for the citizens. And if it includes conditions right now, you can't change what another council could do two or three terms down the road. Just like if we say yes to a drive-through right now, council two or three terms down the road could say no, change it. So your options are either approve, disapprove, or put it with conditions. That way, you don't keep going back and forth when I think what you're saying is, you'll want it, but you want it with conditions. And the conditions can be what you guys feel is right then. Yes, sir.
Just so I can make it clear, talking about the site plan, this is planning, what we expect to see, and what should we do. But also, it's not just that, it's including the retail companies, the other two companies, the department, the United States Department, so, part of the, you know. What I need to do is, if you were to say something, and so, if you were to say, I'm going to go, I'm going to give you a topic, but if you have to show a contract that got permission from the state, that's valid for 205.
Well, here's another question I have along the way. Because of where that property is, and with the other property around it, the owners, whatever, including Brookshires, is there, I get the approval from TechDOT, from the 205 side. But that's an easement behind them off of 550. Are they gonna have permission from the property owner? Is that going to affect this?
As a matter of fact, the easy to do thing is, we're going to be driving to, when you have a traffic, you could, sorry, and ease them. Just in, if you're, I'm having a problem with that, and this is, and I'm having a favor, because, uh, it's not, I mean, it's a little bit of a struggle.
Just the length. Right.
Excellent. Thank you. Then, can I?
No, no, I'm just trying to make it clear that this is a site approval, and there's conditions, and we're talking about SUP to be looked at later and defined. So under that circumstance, I'm trying to divide the two, and so I completely understand.
I want to make a motion. Thank you guys for your time.
Make a motion to approve the site plan for the MFS group LLC for a one-and-a-half acre tract of land located at the southeast corner of Section 550 and 205.
I've got a motion, I have a second.
A second.
Now, back open for discussion.
Okay, so tell me exactly, tell me exactly what we're, what we are...
If you look at page fifty-four, and you hand it up, you're approving the site plan, and then with conditions, and conditions are spelled out pretty straightforwardly. It was testament to the need to get clarification from TechDOT about the exit on the 205. That's something to be concerned about. And then I guess there's some landscaping concerns, and then specifically, they have to apply for a specific use permit. And I think that we'll talk about, you know, how we're gonna define out the SUP at the next meeting. Is that pretty much it, Mr. Hall?
He was saying with the conditions...
With the conditions that we can approve this, and then we'll be speaking to the SUP and trying to define that itself at another meeting.
The SUP is gonna be the control of the document, because that'll be the actual law that goes into play. So I haven't actually seen the conditions on there, so I don't know if they include the... What I understand is the council would prefer to put, you know, something along the lines of no drive-through, or something like that, or have a designated parking spot where people can, you know, pick up the food. So you can certainly say that as part of the conditions. I don't know if it's in what you're reading, but you can add that on as a condition here in the minutes. And then with that way, you make sure it's included in zoning.
So Member Tucker, it is gonna be another meeting.
The zoning is coming back behind this. So the site plan, I'm required to bring that to you for approval, but it's not the law. The law will be the specific use permit, which is an ordinance that's gonna follow along through Planning and Zoning Commission with a recommendation for approval. And when it gets here, you're gonna have an ordinance, you're gonna have a public hearing, you're gonna have the opportunity to make whatever additional conditions that you want.
We can amend that.
But today, with the site plan, I don't like your condition, at least the motion to include the three conditions that I originally recommended that the Planning and Zoning Commission approve. That's TechDOT approval of the driveway, a note on the face of the landscape plan that specifies the percentage of landscaping, which they've done, and apply for a specific use permit, which they've also done.
Gotcha.
Plus, no drive-through, but pickup and drive-up.
Okay, so I can amend the suggestion that there be no pickup or drive-through?
No drive-through, but drive-up and pickup.
No, pickup window only, not a drive-through.
And what are the other conditions?
The other three, the other two remaining conditions as well.
Trudy, do you still second the motion with those conditions?
No, I have, okay, so my first question, when you were distracting...
Yeah, sorry. I'm so sorry. I kept bumping it, so, okay. My other, we sat down with Mr. Pallani last week or so. And my question was, Brookshires has, like, a height?
That has nothing to do with the site plan, right?
Okay, well, no, it does actually, because it states in here that it's, it says that it's... It's the approval of site, landscape plans, and elevation.
Mike, do you want to address that?
It is the elevation, and the elevation that is in this is the one that we showed to Brookshires at a meeting that we had here in the conference room last month, I think. And this is exactly what we showed Brookshires, and they were okay with it, because it doesn't exceed 25 feet.
Okay, so it is okay with them?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right, then, good. All right, so if they're okay with the elevation, then I'm good with that. They're okay with the landscape, I'm assuming, that's okay. All right, the, all right, so the only thing I have an issue with is just the wording, I'm assuming. And I personally do not want the drive-up, drive-through. I don't want that. I just don't, or pickup, whatever you want to call it. I don't want a window.
I don't get to vote.
I know, but that's, so I don't know, I don't know what wording to use, because it's been...
Well, that's not Michael's decision, or Mike's decision, one, it's his motion. And if he wants to amend it, to say that, Mike can say that.
Yeah, I thought that's what you said, with no, with no drive-through or drive-up. But if you want to say with no, you gotta be careful about that, no window where people can pass food through. How about that?
Yeah.
Because obviously, you want a window in your restaurant. But no window where food can pass through. That would mean, it doesn't matter if you just picked it up and ordered it, that if you ordered it or drive-through, whatever, all of that would be included in the window, where no food can pass through.
It's why I keep just going back to the Texas Roadhouse example. Parking spots, walk up, get my food, go back to my car, and go home.
To include a condition, to include a condition with a window where no food can pass through.
Okay, to amend it, to include a window where no food can be passed through.
You're missing the thing. Trudy, are you still going to approve, or second the motion as you stated? With the conditions that are already listed, but to include no window that food can pass through.
Yes.
So I've got a motion, I've got a second. There's not any further discussion. I'm in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so that unanimous. All right, moving on to six point two, consider the site. I'm sorry, I know my voice is a little louder, but I'll get back up here. Six point two, consider the site plan, landscape plan, and exterior elevations for a new building and development located at Kingsbridge Phase 2A Edition, Lot 12R, Block A, consisting of 1.066 acres of land, generally located at the southeast corner of the intersection of State Highway 205 and Kingston Court in McLendon-Chisholm, Rockwall County, Texas. All right, Mike, you want to explain on that one?
Yes, sir, this is the one I started talking about.
Sorry, yeah.
The Kingsbridge Plan Development District, which includes this tract of land. And the tract of land we're talking about is a little bitty half a block street called Kingston Court. It's where RCH and Altria Homes offices are located. They're on the, they're on the north side of this street. This is the property that's immediately south of that. Trans, Behavioral Transformations is a, is a business that currently is in Rockwall. They're moving to this location. Our PD says that for site, it doesn't require, it doesn't even require council approval of the landscape, but I had them put it in here, and the elevations. But it does require that the city council approve the site plan. But it does not need to go to the Planning and Zoning Commission. I had it scheduled for Planning and Zoning Commission yesterday, but I couldn't get a form so that they would understand what we were recommending for your consideration. But what this application does, it's a site plan that we worked with our engineer, their engineers, and Mr. Clutz, who is the one who runs this Behavioral Transformations, is the consulting group. We worked with them for the last two or three months to get the site plan where it needs to be. We did a minor amendment to the plat. I think maybe yesterday the mayor may have signed that. It was just to get fire lanes on the previously approved plat. This site plan complies with the intention, with the engineering, with the landscaping, and with the elevations, and with the zoning that's on the ground. And with that, your staff is recommending approval. It did not go to the Planning and Zoning Commission, because it's not required. If you take a look on page sixty-three of the document, of the information, Kingsbridge K site plans shall be approved by the city council. That's why we're here, without going to P&amp;Z. And this is the only one I'm aware of where it happens like this. But I did ask the P&amp;Z to look at it, because I thought it was important information, but I couldn't get a form from them. I'm glad to answer any questions that you have.
Do you have any question?
I was just wondering about the height of this particular building. It's similar to the others that are on-site there, they're adjacent to where RCH is located.
It's roughly the same. I think I put the elevations in there.
It's hard to read, that's all. But I'm just making the assumption that's the case.
It's the same size, one story with pitch roof.
Right.
Looks like it runs about, it's too small for me to read, but it looks like about nineteen or twenty feet.
I know there's not, that we, I don't think we can do this, but I'm hoping that they're going to try to, in the construction, during the construction period, that they're going to be able to kind of blend it in with the rest of the other buildings there. I know we don't have any control on that, but it might be something...
This is supposed to be a brick building with regular asphalt shingles. I do have one condition that I need to add, since this afternoon, our building official has reviewed the site plan and has found that they've got two of their parking lot lights too close to the property line. Because there's light bleed through onto adjacent property. For a commercial adjacent to residential, we have a requirement that you can't have any light bleed over the property line. And so if you approve this, and I want you to approve this, it's subject to the ability to relocate the two parking lot lights so they no longer interfere with adjacent single-family property.
And then, again, I'm having a hard time reading this, but what's the square footage on it? Do you happen to know? Fifty-two?
Who are you?
Ben Clutz, live in Rockwall, six one seven Limerhill Drive. Sorry, I tried to get here a little early. I didn't know it was gonna be this crowded. But yes, we're trying to, how the building's gonna look is just almost identical in construction and similar in nature as the Altria/RCH building property is right there. It's gonna be stone, majority on the front with brick masonry in the back.
And then, I think in the county, if you have a building with greater than 6,000 square feet, you have to have inside sprinklers system, is that, will you include that? I don't know what the current requirements are here.
At my understanding, at this time, RCH cannot guarantee the pressure for the building if there was something related with RCH. And that's what's, why that's, why it's in the plan, is because I don't believe it was feasibly possible for us to put it in.
Just wondering.
Yeah, that's what I was told, anyway. Some, most of ours do have them. We do have a couple that do not, but we're right at usually about the $5,000. I don't know what the code is here.
And there's obviously sufficient parking spaces here in this park, there's adjacent ones.
Correct.
Again, another question I really don't need to ask. Yep.
We're trying, and moving the lights, it's gonna be no big deal either. We'll, we want to work with y'all as much as, you know, we can, we're not, I mean, that's not the issue at all. That's, we're, we want to work with y'all as much as, you know, we can, we're not, I mean, that's not going to be an issue at all. It took a little while to get, yeah, but we did, the parking lot.
Well, what I like, and I drive by this almost on a daily basis, I like the utilization of, of the property and making it very efficient with your footprint on it. I mean, I really do, it's, it's going to be a nice addition to, for McLendon-Chisholm, but besides that, just that corner there.
Absolutely.
And it's just been a blank, a blank lot there that, because it's, I think it's a half acre, isn't it?
It's about a little over one acre, I believe.
One acre, okay.
But we are using just about every usable part.
Yeah, when you're putting a building of that sort on it, it's, you're going to max out the, the space, that's for sure.
Yeah.
Very nice.
No, thank you.
I think we're good on questions. You're playing a motion, I know.
We're about to make a motion to approve the site plan, landscape, and exterior elevations for the people to develop, so that it can be approved by the community's team to continue, uh, to develop.
All right, I've got a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Trudy, pull your microphone a little bit closer to you.
I, I believe there was a condition on that with the pulling back of the.
Yeah, there's a condition about the lighting, I'm sorry. Can you amend your motion to include the condition on moving the parking lot lighting as needed per Mr. Coker?
And I'd like to amend the, uh.
Amend the motion to include.
Yeah, amend the motion to include the lighting.
Movement of the parking lights.
Two lighting, is it two of them? Two lighting of, yeah, the parking lot lights.
All right, Brian, do you still approve, or do you still second the motion?
I'll still second the motion.
All right, if there's not any discussion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Show that unanimous. 6.3, building inspection process.
Hey, good evening, Mayor, members of the council. We've, we've been trying to get this building inspection process to you for about a month or so, but we're excited to be here today. As you remember, back in September of 2022, the council did not renew a prior contract for our prior building inspection services. That left us, especially when the prior inspection company did not utilize their 30 days, which was in their contract. They severed the relationship immediately. We were, with our building community actively going, we had to pull in a, an inspection company on an emergency basis. They were given through up until January, and told in January that you'd relook at it and see where you want to go with the building inspection services. So here we are, in January plus. Based on everything's going on, this is, this is where we're at. So the council is, it's before the council to decide where you want to go with this, with this building inspection services for our city, which is, in my opinion, very critical, not only for the housing stock, but for all our, the safety and security of all our residents in the city, both now and into the future. So I've listed on your staff report three to four possible scenarios that the council, we're asking that the council decide tonight, where you want to go, I mean, how you want to provide this, this critical service to our residents, our current and future. And let me say, before I get into those four items, that we, um, we entered into an emergency agreement with Texas Compliance Solutions, and we missed one day of, of inspections through that. So they were very great to work with, and, and throughout the time that they've been doing this for us, every, they've always looked for better ways of doing things. Working with the, with the, um, the contracting community, the contractors and developers, as well as the residents of the city. So they've done an excellent job. We have nothing negative to say about them, both internally, staff-wise, or externally. The two things externally, I guess, were they can only come on two days a week. So they're here on generally Tuesdays and Fridays of every week, instead of every single day that the, the building community was used to. And, but I think, I haven't heard that complaint from them for a while. We had some bumps at the beginning, to get smoothed out, and we're pretty smoothed out. Secondly, they did not have a Texas Certified Plumbing Certificate. They were ICC certified, the international code, but they were not certified, and it's the only certification in the building process that needs a Texas, specific state of Texas certificate, is plumbing. They did not have that, but we had another outside building company, Burgess, that came in and has come in and has done a fantastic job. So they sort of share the process of what's going on right now, and they're, are doing an excellent job. So during that process, we've had, we've been contacted by other building inspection services, and I don't know if there's some here, or they're listening, or whatever, but they've been very interested in getting the business of McLendon-Chisholm. And I would think that, don't know, I haven't worked directly with any of them, other than those two that I mentioned, that have done excellent jobs, but I have no reason to doubt that the other ones can do an excellent job as well. We'd go through a bidding process, if that's the, the process that you want to go. So the four, the four proposed suggestions for the council tonight to make a decision on is, one, state status quo with the Texas Compliance Solutions, and, and the current inspection services that utilizes Burgess as the plumbing certification. Number two, go out to bid. Open it all the way up and let everybody and anybody that's interested, any company that, that can meet the basic certifications and qualifications to bid on it, and you choose one. Third would be, bring the building inspections process in-house. Hire a, a building inspector, a building official, that's fully certified in all inspection areas. As you know, with hiring things, that would take additional time, period, to hire, and you'd have the cost of the truck, the cost of some, not a major cost of other materials, just getting that office all set up. As development continues, if you went that route, you most likely, into the future, if development continues as we, as you approve it, that there may be a need for another building inspector, instead of a bill, chief building official. But I can't see anything more than, than two into the future. But right now, we're just talking about one person, chief in, in, in the house. And then the fourth item would be sort of a hybrid approach of some of those, to contract out as, I mean, we could go as internal. I mean, when we had to do internal, if the person gets sick, or, or goes on vacation, or whatever, the building, the building community doesn't stop. They go. And, and so we'd have to have some type of contract with the outside building community, if you decided to go that way. So again, it's, it's as I, or whatever, if you have another idea of how to do it, that's great, too. But those are the four that we've identified. State status quo, with what we have now, just continue forward. Go out to bid, and open it up for all the building inspection companies out there to, to participate and bid on it, or bring it in-house, and hire a chief building official, or a hybrid approach of any of those. So that's, I turn it back to you to deliberate. If you have any questions, please ask, I'm more than willing to try to get you more informed, so you can do this.
How much did we spend?
No, 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 great question.
Okay.
And then I, and that, it's perfect, I forgot to tell you. What we have budgeted currently, for this, this fiscal year, there'd be no additional costs. So for whatever item that, whatever scenario you choose, it won't be an additional cost to, to the city, from what we currently have budgeted.
Well, what I'm asking is, what did we, what did we spend last year compared to what it would cost us for an employee, plus a truck, plus benefits, plus, is what I'm asking.
No, okay, that's a, that's a great question as well. In our audited financials for the last, last fiscal year, we spent $223,000 on building inspection services. Then, based on a chief building official, having looked at a salary planner, developed that in, in our pick-six neighboring cities, but I'd be very surprised if, if that, that job would pay more than $100,000 a year. Benefits generally are around 30%, so you're looking at $130,000 for a full-time in-house person, approximately. I don't take that exact, but, excuse me. So that's where we're looking, that plus a pickup truck, I think, like the one that we have out here for code enforcement, costs about, on the state contract, so it's cheaper than MSRP. It was 25 to 30,000, I believe. And then, other tools or materials that they'll need that would not be significant, I would think, in, in doing their, their job, maybe an iPad, or, I mean, things like that. So that's, that's the difference.
So what would you say?
Between now and then. I, I would think, long-term, you may want to go that direction, to have an in-house, I mean, somebody here all the time. But I, again, as I started, I, I have been very impressed with RCH, or, and, or TCS? Excuse me, RCH, on my mind. TCS, Texas Compliance Solutions have done an excellent job, and Burgess has done an excellent job for us. And, and undoubtedly, I've been impressed, just talking on the phone, and/or other communicated emails and others with other, other inspection companies that are very professional, seem very professional, very good. I, I think you could do good, any of those choices, but having somebody in there, I mean, eight to five, or whatever the hours are, in-house, does bring an employee in, and there's pros and cons of having employees. But it also frees up a little bit, I mean, questions asked, builders come all the time to the front desk. And we have our builder expert right here, and that does a great job, she and Judy do great jobs at that, and are very efficient at what they do in this, in this area. But there's a lot of times questions that we don't know the answer. And, and, and the Texas Compliance Solution says, hey, send them to us, give them our phone number, we'll do it. So outside entities can solve that just as easy, just they're not here every, I mean, all the time. So is it a huge deal? Probably not, but it's because these companies would say, hey, send them to us, we'll answer it right away. I, this Texas Compliance Solution, when they come to town, they, they text all the people they're working with and say, hey, we're in town, if you haven't set up an appointment and you need one, contact us while we're here. So they, they try to find ways to help out as much as they can, and I'm sure that other companies out there would do the same. So both ways, I don't, I don't think you'd go tremendously wrong both ways. If you're really wanting to save a dollar or two, maybe bringing it in-house with one employee.
It just seems like if I could save 60 grand, I would hire them in-house. I mean, that's like a no-brainer option three to me.
No, that is, that is something, we, we budgeted.
And that's the first year, once you pay for the truck, now saving almost 120 grand.
Yeah, we, we budgeted 195 this current fiscal year, and we think it won't go over that. So it's, it's a little closer, but it's, yeah.
Just simple, I would, option three, if I can save that much money, seems like not much of a debate.
Yeah, I, I would, you know, with the status quo, option number one, with TCS, it seems like they've had minimal complaints, and they seem to be very efficient, they seem to work well with the customers at hand. I would do a cost analysis on what their costs is versus what, you know, our charges are. And then, as far as going out to bid, which is option number two, I would just put this out to bid and, and do a comparative. And most likely, TCS is going to be part of that bidding process. So I would open that up, you know, it's a, I live in a capitalistic society, I'm opening up to others to, to entertain this. And as far as bringing in a building inspector, if that's the most cost, that's the one I'm least likely to support, but if it's the most cost-efficient, I'll, it'll be fine. And if they provide the same level of service as TCS does, I'll vote for them. So I would explore all three options, looking at some kind of cost analysis for each one of these.
Well, if you hired somebody in-house, they're going to have the credentials of probably pretty good. I'm assuming they can't just be an IT guy applying to be a chief in building inspector, right? So if we hire a chief building inspector, and I can save 60 to 80,000 the first year, and 123,000 the second year after, I still think option three is the best option. It doesn't make sense to me, Dan, of why we would say option one or two is okay.
If that is the case, that you're going to make a savings with that third option, I'm all for it. I want to explore all these, uh, from a cost analysis standpoint, and if that's the third option is the one that holds true, I'm good with it.
And I, I agree with, if the cost analysis shows that we can save that kind of money, obviously, that's what we need to do, because that's the right thing to do for our citizens. But I think we need to do our homework on all the options, and as, as close to accurate and exact figures as possible to show that. So my suggestion was, we stay status quo until we have that information back to us, and then we.
What, what's the timeframe of getting that information back to us?
How long would it take you to get all that?
I could, I could, well, I mean, I'd, I'd open it up to a bid. I mean, you don't, you're not forced, if you get a bid, you're not forced to, to hire or to go with any of those bids. We put that language in, that the council may or may not select, and so you could go back. They're not going to put a finite number, they're going to put a cost per inspection. And so, I can, I can utilize that cost per inspection and say, last year, we did 100 inspe, I, we did more than that, but 100 inspections, you could get a finite number there, based on what they do, because different inspections may cost different amounts. Plan review is in there, and that's a cost. So, yeah, we could put that out, you know, we'll do it as fast as we can and get it back to you, but we could open it up to, overall bid is what I'm hearing you say.
And, and I, and I'm, I'm okay with like exercising all the review on everything. I guess if you, we did end up going with option three, we kind of control it, right? I mean, we now control the, the salary, so we control the cost of whether he does 100 inspections or 300 inspections, right? Because he's salary-based.
Because he's, he's paid for us, he's not here two days a week, or three days, he's here five days a week, 40 hours or at least. I mean, there could be some emergency inspections that he needs to go, or she needs to go, on a weekend, or a, whatever. But basically, you're right, it's, we, we hire somebody for 40 hours a week, and we're paying them this, you know, exactly. And it could be five inspections, or it could be 50 inspections a week, whatever, just based on the workload.
Okay.
Well, I was wondering if, if, would they be able to help Judy with any of the permits, or anything like that?
Well, they would be, um.
I mean, if they were slow, let's just say it was a slow, whatever, would they be able to help Judy with permits?
Oh, everything in the building inspection process, if we hired somebody, they'd be involved in.
Okay.
I mean, without a doubt. That would be their job, and, and these guys would be helping in that process.
I'm just saying, if Judy needed some relief, they might, if it was slow for them, they, they would be able to. I'm just saying if Judy needed some relief, they might, if it was slow for them, they would be able to step in with Judy.
My suggestion is that we go back to the initial investigation.
Okay.
As far as an analysis, shouldn't be that hard.
Nope.
Get a cost of what a building inspector has in mind for an acquisition from a city to drive the area. Obviously, know on the byboard what a vehicle would cost and any other incidentals that may be needed to do that job.
Yep.
So you can get up, you can give us that high and low figure for that cost. And then figuring out companies that may want to bid on it, what their, what their fee would be to do it.
Yep.
And base it against our, our numbers for previous years of what we've done, that is best.
Yes, absolutely.
Let's see, it's, basically, it's the end of January, I would say we'd like to see that number by, I mean, the end of February. See that number at the last council meeting in March, if not the first council meeting.
Done.
That gives you a couple of weeks to, if you put out things, feelings and bids for companies. Are we in agreeance with that council?
Perfect. Thank you, Brian.
Floyd, you okay with that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, sir. All right, let's move on to 6.4. This one is, this one is discussion and action on filing with the Public Utility Commission. On filing with the Public Utility Commission, an application transfer or merger of a retail public utility pursuant to Texas Water Code 13.301 and 16 of the Texas Administrative Code, Section 24.239. This is just giving you direction, if I understand this correctly, to start that process. Is that not correct? Yeah. All right. Guys, I don't know that we need a vote on that. If you guys are okay with me giving direction again to do that. Are you okay with that? Okay, comrade. Note that, or Shelley, note that he needs to start the process of filing with the PUC on that application transfer and merger of a retail public utility. 6.5, discussion and consider city administrator draft an official letter to the city of Rockwall of our current status with RCH Water Supply Company and our intent to have a new water purchase agreement drawn up with an understanding it will be temporary and requests for a letter to be sent to NTMWD, which is North Texas Municipal Water District, for when the city of McLennan Chisholm is ready to become a direct customer. Again, I can give him direction if that is having a vote at council. Okay, so Shelley, it'll be another one for him to draft that letter and, you know, that one needs to go out rather quickly that, you know, to make sure Rockwall understands we're serious in what we're trying to do. And then 6.6, discussion and consider city administrator draft an official letter to the North Texas Municipal Water District Board, the status and goal of becoming a direct customer. And folks, what that means is, once we get this process done with RCH, and then the process would become, would start for us to become a direct customer with North Texas Municipal Water District, which is who Rockwall is a direct customer to. Then they, Rockwall provides us the water. We'd be going direct to the source of that. That explains a little bit about all of this we're saying with all the initials and everything.
Mayor, on this particular one?
On 6.6?
Right, 6.6, yes, sir.
Yes.
Since that one's going directly to North Texas, it may be better when he drafts a letter he has following a vote of the city council that.
That they approve the writing of the letter or the meat of the letter? Absolutely. All right, y'all give it that direction? All right, before we do the next one.
I'm getting old and I don't sit up here for long hours sometimes. Let's take a five-minute break.
Floyd's ugly. Guys, we're gonna start back up. It is, it is, look.
Excuse me.
It is 8:13. We're gonna start back up, guys. And gals. All right, we are now going to move to 6.7, presentation and discussion with Blackland Water Supply Company, Velvin and Weeks Consulting and City, and the City Water Committee on Operations Administration, inter-local agreements for the purpose of the city operating and maintaining a water system. All right.
Good evening. Lou? Good evening, mayor and city council. I'm Adrian Balkam. I'm on your city water committee. Along with me is.
Tony Crawford.
And also here tonight.
Tyler Hendrickson with Velvin and Weeks Engineering.
My name's Rob May. I'm project manager of Blackland Water.
Jason McKinney, board president.
And Scott Muckensturm, general manager at Blackland Water.
So tonight, we're here because there's been a lot of information that we've been working on. I'm hoping that everybody can hear me, okay? So I just want to just review because a lot of people don't know what the city water committee, when do we start? And so it was on November 4th, 2022. And the committee will be recommending body to the city council and present findings for formal discussion and action to the entire city council. With the creation of this committee, we'll be able to do many things to keep the process moving, achieving the overall goal of transparency, communication to residents, and ultimately have a great water system. So several months ago, we started looking into the issues with RCH. RCH Water Supply Corporation is the CCNN that provides a lot of the connections here in McLennan Chisholm. Obviously, we all have stories to tell and things of that nature. But what our purpose is, is like, well, let's, let's get past like the idea of getting a contract agreement and getting all of the customers from RCH. What do we do then? Because obviously, none of us, you know, is, we don't disagree that we don't have a public works department. We do not have operators and we do not have any tech people. So when we do get this contract agreement transferred over, who is gonna be operating this? And so tonight is about an introduction to Blackland Water Supply Corporation. And I want to introduce you to them because they are local. They have had a similar experience with administration issues in the past. And tonight, we want to talk about that. And also, if you can flip over Shelley to the next page, I want to focus on some words that I want to give you all to understand that there's some things that's not just, hey, flip a switch or turn on the knob that the water comes out. I mean, there's a lot that goes into managing a water supply system. So, so we weren't, we're gonna talk about that tonight so that you can be informed that, that this particular entity would be a valuable asset to not only be a partner, but also to help us get to our ultimate goal, which is to be a direct customer of North Texas Municipal Water District. So, Mr. Scott?
So I'll, I'll talk on that. We, we had a very similar situation as our state. We are currently buying our water from Rockwall and we've been doing that for numerous years. But back in early 2021, we saw some things that were happening within our leadership that we needed to make a change. I came on the board in 2018. I'm a member in our district. And I was on the board at that time and myself, with our current president, Jason McKinney, started looking at some things that were coming our way, our issues that we were having with the city of Rockwall, with development, et cetera, management inside, customer service issues that we felt like with what was happening, what was coming, that we needed to make a change. So in February of 2021, we started those discussions. We actually started meeting with the city of Rockwall. We could not understand as a board group why we were sort of biting the hand that fed us at that time and said, we gotta make a change. We gotta build some relationships back so that we can move forward. So in April 30 of 2021, we made that leadership change. The board then came to me and asked me to step in as interim general manager. We probably did that. And then in that year, I became general manager. Within that period of time. Within that period of time, we started working on amending our contract with Rockwall. We didn't have an issue of handing out more connections that we had. It was more of an issue of we had development coming, and we had to need some aids. Our prior GM had put out some ill-served letters that put us in a very difficult situation. So with that being said, we had those discussions with the city of Rockwall, their city manager. We started building that fence back in regards to our relationship. Within that period of time, there were some things that we had to meet to, in good faith, to get in better standing with them. One, amending our current contract. Second, we had been telling them for many years that we were gonna get off them and go directly to North Texas. So we started the process of buying the land for our direct take point to do that. We did that between two thousand twenty-one, four acres and fate, which at that time, now it's changed, so we can sort of talk about that presses. We did that, and then we started working on our contract with North Texas. And in December of two thousand twenty-one, we actually got that contract with North Texas to become customer. So in that whole process, there were some things that we had to meet as a water supply company in regards to our current contract. And within that, our contract was amended in September. And we actually was able to go and increase our current connections capacity because we did have development coming on Porter Road with Wallwood. And it was a pretty easy conversation. Once we showed them that, we actually were coming to the table to meet some requirements that they were asking of us. And with that being said, we did get that additional capacity, and that was actually amended into our contract. So that's sort of our history. We've been, you know, really working with them hand in hand, and we're actually in process, and probably getting ahead of them for in process of that we take point to go down at FM thirty-four. Am I stealing any thunder there, Adrian? So, I'm pretty, I'm better standing up, so. So, you know, last summer was a pretty unusual situation. We had ninety days without water. And so it not only became an issue, you know, not just for RCH, but also across this region. And with that being said, if you can imagine, when there's water use, high demand, North Texas was actually sending out what they called water, produce water, and it was being used instantaneously. So in that process, in July, when RCH ran out of water, it was more the mere fact because it was so much critical demand within this region that it turned into sort of a perfect storm. Plus, they were asking for additional capacity over what their current contract was, so that sort of put them in a bad situation. So...
A moment for, when we're talking about region, all of the operators in this area were contacted to be able to balance the extreme amount of water that was going through.
So with us buying water from Rockwall, they're actually having difficulties keeping their storage capacity full because of all the use, not just from the city of Rockwall, but also RCH, Blackland, City of Heath, et cetera. So there was the big pull within the system. So when we got back to them, I think it was end of last year, we started talking about, because we had, our fate site, which is up there on Ben Payne and sixty-six, we started seeing some difficulties coming from the north down to our system because of the Florida and Rochelle and so on. So when we got back to them, and the issues of the demand up north, and what I mean north is you got Rockwall, Plano, all the big, you know, cities that are pulling water from the north part of North Texas municipal water. So we actually, our engineer Tyler Hendrickson went back to them. We started thinking about going down south here on, down in Terrell, and there's a site down here on thirty-four, which is down kind of where three twenty-two, which is Abel Springs. They have a take point there, North Texas had a forty-plus inch line there. And we started those discussions of going down south. When we said that to them, they were somewhat excited because the demand in the south is quite a bit less than it is up north. So it made sense to go there to pull regional water from that site. So they gave us their blessings to do that, we're in that process. We're actually in the process of requiring the land there, all the parcels all the way up, countering three twenty-two, up Porter Road into a development called Wallwood on Porter Road. We'll put a pump station there, and then that water will be received from our new take point all the way up here, and then it'll be pumped to our tower. It also helps us facilitate some future growths over here, just north of High Point Road, and also provide water to our system. So we're in that process. That has been, like I said, we've been, this April will be two years for us, me and Rob and then our current board in regards to that process. So it doesn't happen overnight, and it does take some time, but I am here to say that, you know, we're in a position, from that standpoint, that we had some discussions with North Texas about regional water within this part of the county. And we understand the concern and the necessity for that. So with that being said, we're sort of here, and I probably got way ahead of this thing, but I'll get back to it again.
So our goal right now is to address meeting the current system customers. And then we need to be able to find an operator and administrator to be able to handle all of the requirements that TCUQ, PUC, you know, state regulations, EPA, the whole nine yards, okay? That stuff, I can tell you from open records requests that I've been doing since July on RCH, there's many violations that are happening. There is many reports that are not being done. And there's like a couple of documents that should have been inside the packet that I provided you. And this is an example, and this should be really concerning to you, okay? So let's just flip over, and I just wanna kind of give you an insight. And again, you can double check me if you don't feel that, you know, maybe, maybe I'm wrong. I would like, I would encourage you to go and do an open records request with the Texas Board, or Texas... Texas Water Development Board. And you can get the same document. And if you can, if you look at the page, you'll see the thing that says connections and usage, and then there was, say, volume, gallons. And then down below, it says zero for two thousand nineteen. In two, uh, twenty twenty, zero all the way down the line. And then in twenty twenty-one, there's some numbers, and then down at the total unmetered, one hundred twenty-five thousand gallons. This should be alarming to you because this is telling us that they're not flushing their system. And so I'm gonna let one of the experts down here talk about why it's important to maintain the system and all of the needs that is needed. And I'm gonna let Mr. Rob, you wanna talk about?
Flushing the system is required by TCUQ once a month, and what that entails is we have a certain minimum that's called corn residual, that has to stay within. This is the health of the system, health of the water people. So we're required to go through on ends and at certain points every month, sit there and flush water out. Check it when we first open it up and turn the flusher. Sometimes you guys might have noticed that when you're using water, you see a lot of an aldehyde. This is what we're doing. And the reason why is because if the water's not moving, it's gonna get low. So we have to maintain that, and we have to run it for fifteen minutes minimum, whether it's at a level that is required. We still run for fifteen minutes, and we report that, and we log that. And we have to take those records and keep the TCUQ and have them onsite with us. Put them in, where's your record, where's your flusher? We have to provide, show that we did it, and we also have to account for how much water we did. Use my operators to sit there and maybe see how fast water's coming out, and we have to put the gallons usage in. She had, Adrian had, unmetered water. Unmetered water on our system is the flushing is possible leaks or anything like that, but we still have to account. Last year, on our usage, it was metered water leaks or anything else, it was over twelve million. Unmetered, not, that's unmetered water. Couple years prior, before we'd come in, the water loss, is what we call it, was sixty-eight million. And we, the efficiency of water flushing, keeping our system healthy, we took that sixty-eight million and took it down to twelve million. But we still maintain the system, kept it healthy, did what was required by TCUQ because we're accountable for that. There's fines, there's, I mean, that's when you can get boil orders, so all that stuff comes into play. But it has to be done for the health of the system, and that's why we do it. But that's a little bit different, and that's what these numbers, me, would concern me as a public official. Oh, percentage wise, I believe that we went from, yeah, down to twelve percent. And just to give you an idea, I know that Rockwall during the summer can flush a million a day. So I know that sounds like a lot, but if you take a whole system that we've got over a hundred miles in our system, and you're flushing it once a month, and you're running all those hydrants, and we've got forty-eight points plus running those fifteen minutes, you know, we have to have, or you have leaks in between the two.
One of our customers this past month, and it was a two-inch line, and it was actually, the leak was going into a retention pond. So over that month period, it was about one point four being out. So that gives you an idea on one leak, what it can be over a period of time, so, just to give you an idea. That was a pretty high bill too, let me tell you. Is, is, who turns this for me? Who does this for? So the, what you were saying a while ago though, seeing a zero on here as it was being turned in by an entity, that's concerning, why? So in other words, you're saying, if that report is correct, zero, there was no flushing?
And that's based off how we fill our report out, so.
But who should be watching over them? Like, they're not, if they're turning this in yearly, monthly, out of their health, when they're trying to do it?
Being on your end of that though, where, why is TCUQ concerned about a fourteenth turn eight from zero? So there's no alarm, I mean, it should be alarmed here, correct?
I bring this up to you guys because we're supposed, we're all supposed to be the representative government. This could be a potential, I mean, every, look, look, just look at the actions that have been taking place in two thousand twenty. You saw me, I handed y'all the investigation, that was eleven of us that did the investigation regarding boil notice. And it turned out that at that time, we were not aware about the contract agreement between Rockwall and RCH having, you know, two point one million gallons a day, or that it was thirteen ninety-five liters, or thirteen, thirty-nine five connections. In addition to that, there was infrastructure related issues and some backflow problems. And then in two thousand twenty-one, you know, we had my, the neighbors in Stone Verde, they were coming up here complaining about the administration, billing issues. I mean, and we're talking about extreme numbers, two thousand dollars. Then we had a meter replaced, and then all the pumping numbers went back down to normal. But why should this be important to the city? I mean, why should the city care? Because the care is because, you know, this is public water. It's in our territory, this is in our area, negligence is not acceptable. This is public water, people could die. You know, this is a public health hazard that could, it's just, you know, it could be one day away. That's why we need to be moving forward towards, you know, getting better water management when it comes down to it. Because there's things that on the system that need to be improved, we already know that. We already seen the reports, twenty, you know, so two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two, what happened in July thirteen. In, again, in the, in this file that you're gonna have, there's a historical, and I highlight it just for convenience, so you can just go through it. It, the area says a, over two point one, you'll see, it's the same thing, it's happening. It's not a what if it's gonna happen, it's when it's gonna happen. It's gonna happen this year. We're gonna go over two point one. And so at the end of the day, you're gonna have to understand that RCH is not doing anything to try to get an alternate, alternate water source. They've been told that by Rockwall. So will we go through the, the pressure again, where we're... Oh yes, absolutely, absolutely.
Um, I really enjoyed Adrian's video last summer of RCH meeting. Why are you watching that? Like, I cannot look away from this, uh, of the, it was really, really a terrible meeting. Never ever wanna put myself in that situation. And I'm the engineer for Blackland, I also represent High Point, which is serving this building right now. So, um, I'll do what I can. So, um, I mean, there's a lot, seems like there's a lot of problems operation with RCH. And as you can imagine, and y'all are moving forward, taking that over, y'all kinda know what you're getting into. And you can imagine, there's operational problems, and there's physical problems as well that you're inheriting that you really don't know what to do. So we're heavily recommending that you work with this team here, and it really is a team. It takes me, takes them, takes the board president, takes, takes all of us together to make this work right. So, um, and I think that's a good move for y'all to move forward to acquire the system and make the improvements to have a good, healthy water system. But, you know, you need to look at the conditions that created that awful meeting last summer, and know that RCH has grown by hundreds, hundreds of meters from last summer to this coming summer. And know that not one thing has happened different in the system, the same scenarios. So if you take all those people that were at the RCH meeting and drop them in behind me, that would be very uncomfortable. And that's something that no one, no one wants that to know. So, you know, obviously, things are necessary to be done, changes, increased water supply, system improvements, you know, across the board. And I think it starts with the management system, and then it trickles down to everything. And as y'all move forward here, you know, I think you kind of break... Um, and as y'all move forward here, you know, I think you kind of break down the big problems into like, short, short term, is the acquisition. I mean, if you don't have the system, you can't do anything, because it's not yours. I mean, you really can't ask North Texas that you want a direct connect, because you don't have a water system. If you did have a water system, you could do that, but you don't have one. And also, there's the techs dot issue, which is on the horizon and right in your face. So they, R C H is responsible, they are the utility, they are responsible for relocating those utilities. Uh, not much is going on. So, um, and techs dot is, anyway, they're working with them, I know techs dot, I do utility locations for High Point, Blackland, everybody. That, that is a big, big deal, and something you cannot put off, and you have to be good. Engineers? We, I've been working, well, the, the different improvements we have going on with Blackland, probably, especially over fifteen years. Easily, easily, yeah. So, you know, that's, you know, acquiring the system, if, if you don't do that, then we're all wasting our time here, because you don't own the system, and then no point in talking about it, so, so what? It's their responsibility, you don't have any, any play in it, they're doing good, they're doing bad, you're right. It's not your problem, it's your area, and your citizens aren't getting good and adequate water, but you're not the water boy. You know, they are, but, but if you acquire this system, then it becomes your problem. And so that, that's, so this, the short-term problem, acquire this system, then you gotta deal with the techs that you, are they gonna deal with it? Are they not gonna deal with it, and you're gonna have to deal with it? That's a big issue. And then you have adequate capacity, because the problems that you've been having, you didn't get any more water, but you got more connections, and they're gonna drink as much as people in the past, so you're gonna have more out of it, and that's gonna be tough. So, we, you need more adequate water supply in it from Rockwall, High Point, and other entities that could kind of bridge you over in the interim, while you're working on a long-term fix. Um, then obviously, the system needs improvement, you know, a, all our storage is sitting at the corner of, of Rockwall. Well, all your connections are out here, and if you're not getting any more water from Rockwall, that's, that location doesn't even make sense anymore. So that's a big issue, those things are expensive, and it's paid for by water rates. You know, and the system, the funds that have saved, uh, for the, you know, if, if, if the funds, yeah. So, you know, funding these improvements is a big deal, you've got millions of dollars right off the bat, and utilities are there, or they do. Or they won't do, and y'all have to, so somebody's gonna have to do that, and it's gonna cost me a lot. And you have infrastructure problems, which I would put easily in there. So, that's gonna have to come out of these water rates. And I think, and, and as we get into, that turns short-term, mid-term, I call it, and then long-term, because I hope that North Texas directly on, which is very, very difficult. So, uh, anyway, we've already been talking about some ways that partnerships, regionalization, that can help with that, to make that faster. Because I run the North Texas, it takes condemnation, it's very complicated, and you might say that, if it goes good, that's Blackland. With y'all's growth, you don't have Blackland. Your, your adequate water capacity ran out years ago, to put it that way. So, and uh, we've done some analysis and looked at y'all's peak da, peak daily usage per connection, and it's at least thirty-three percent more than what T C Q is. So, even at T C Q capacity, criteria, R C H exceeds their contract. So, there's too many connections in the system right now, even at T C Q, and now at the higher usage, you surpassed that long, years ago. So, you know, there's some serious problems that really need to be addressed, and I do recommend that you work with this team to kind of help figure this out. And Adrian said, this is kind of like you're drinking from a firehouse, there's a lot to know real fast, and y'all don't know any of this, but, but we do.
Can I ask a few questions?
Yes ma'am.
Okay, um, like, if we're at two point one now, okay, and we need two point six, let's just say, where would we, if we worked with you guys, where would you guys help us get that though?
Scott did that, and really amazingly well, that he went down to Rockwall after Rockwall said, and it is a very similar situation to R C H. That, that Rockwall wants both of them to go, that we want the capacity, we don't want to be in wholesale, going back, which is kind of rare. And so, Scott went in and, and gave them. So um, went in to, amended a lot of relation, relationships with Rockwall, and said, listen, we're making a good faith effort here, we bought property, we're making some steps, we're going to do this, probably, and made some steps to show, hey, we're honest, we're, we are doing step, and got Rockwall to increase their capacity, which is what they've told R C H, it's a flat no, that, that's not gonna happen, and, you know, but the, the mending of the fences hadn't happened, there hasn't been the good faith efforts, and hasn't been those things. Yeah, but, and I'm not saying they would increase it, but I'm saying if you made the effort, you passed, they happen, so that's an idea.
And, and we, and we had, we had that same no, when we started meeting with them back in February twenty-one. Uh, it was a hard no. So, it was a no then, but here we come into July, August, with some of the things that we did, and it was a different take. She felt like she could go to that council and say, hey, they're acting in good faith, let's go ahead and do that, to meet their needs.
Okay. I think Mayor Protim was trying to ask, like, let's just say, Rockwall says no, okay? Where could we go to purchase the additional, the additional?
Okay. You know that this building wouldn't have existed if High Point hasn't ran over a million dollar, twelve-inch water line from their pump station to get out. High Point did that, serves it right here. And there's a, there's an eight-inch, and all this development over here, they have an eight-inch, so right across the road, twelve-inch, eight-inch. So, I'm not saying that can happen, y'all would have to go ask if that could happen, but uh, that might be able to be happened. Now, when they're in the water shortage, I talked to John Washburn, the manager of High Point, and he made a good faith call to people, that uh, you know, hey, can we help out, please let us help? They're good. So, anyway, you have neighbors that are willing to help you, and are wanting to help.
We butt up to um, R C H on five forty-eight at High Point, and then also at five fifty um, on Dowell. So we have ability there to help there in the short term also. But I, but also, I think, and I'm probably speaking out of turn, but I think if there's good faith, to Rockwall saying, hey, understanding what happened back July, and there's, there's some fence building, that I think there's a way to get additional capacity, that makes sense, with the understanding of things happening in the future, to, to get off of the city of Rockwall, because that's what they want, that's what they told us.
Exactly, yeah, yeah, to get what they want, they have to be a little bit of a.
Exactly, that's right.
Okay. And just for some clarity, because I don't want to, to give the impression like, oh my gosh, July thirteenth is happening again, what do we do? And then running around trying to find where water, that, you know, they have amazing systems called a SCADA system, um, that, you know, you can be able to see historically what's, what's going on, so this is not gonna be, like, almost the day of, like, you would know the, the process of the, the incline, uh, or the increase, and so, we would already have this in place. Plus, there's also um, uh, plans of stages that you're supposed to be working with.
Stage one is two days a week, stage three is one day a week, stage four is, yeah, yeah, you, you, you have to prepare.
That's right, preparing.
You're done. You know? Exactly.
And because it's a drought and because of this management, and this was because of this management.
Exactly, okay, um, and like, how long would it take to transition off, uh, like, the city of Rockwall's, before that you pursue being a direct customer? Like, how long would that, how long does that normally?
So we're, we're in that process right now, um, with our situation, so we're, we're in acquisitions of, you know, up, up from thirty-four, up with parcels there. And so you're, you're talking, you know, three, probably five years. Because that, you have to, you have to get the acquisition, and you have to build the site, to take the water. So it's, it takes some time. Yeah.
So the timeline.
And the acquisitions are incredibly hard, incredibly expensive.
Have you guys been approved, to be the North Texas, you have been approved?
They had a contract in December twenty-one.
Yes ma'am.
Also, they're abandoning the, our south site, rather than the north side.
Um, she asked, Mayor Protim asked if all are approved as a North Texas municipal water district customer, and the answer was yes.
Yes.
Who do you guys recommend as an engineer that would be key to reviewing our system and the future infrastructure?
Mr. Hendrickson, he's right here.
Are you guys looking at this as a, as a, as an interim, kind of transitional movement, from helping us out until we bring on board somebody that, that we, we can call our own, or are you guys looking at it a long-term contract, in terms of assistance? It's just an open question, I, I don't know where you guys.
I think that really comes down to your, your needs and what that looks like for y'all.
Yeah.
I mean, there's, there's a lot of factors that come into disagreement. We've already talked to some people that we know, Texas world, that there are similar situations like this that have existed before. There was a, um, City of Temple went through that, and there was a rural water that actually managed that for seven years, until the city was a, actually able to take over, so.
It's open ended to some degree.
That, um, I mean, we want to help, we, we are good neighbors, our customers, our family, it's true. We, we work for the customers, we're supposed to provide water, and reliable water, efficient water, and help. But right now, I, I, I see what's going on with you, I have friends on the system, yeah, I just keep seeing you guys, right now, getting kind of backed against the wall, like Tyler said, you know, the, the season's around the corner, I don't, if some pieces aren't starting to fall in place, that, you know, that can help that, then I, I see that happening at land. I mean, no one wants to see that happen anywhere. Provide that. And, and be clean, and, and be, you know, that you don't have to worry about that. But right now, I just see you, you, your time is getting shorter.
The limit on the number of homes that they've taken on.
Yeah, I appreciate that, and we've had conversation before, because I met you guys over at your, your location, and uh, are, your problems that you initially had several years ago paralleled to a great degree what we have here? And we had that one conversation over at Sonics that day. And so, I mean, I think you guys are actually in a very good position, because you understand, having gone through it, and seeing what we're going through, that, that, the, the similarity, uh, I, I think you're in a position that you can very much help us. And then the other thing was, just to touch on, in, in case of a, of a need to assist us with increased volumes at some point in time, we talked about this as well, is that you have a parallel system to ours, and that, that can be done pretty expeditiously, it's not a, a matter of months, it was a question of a week or so, or less, and so that was encouraging to hear that.
Right. I mean, a lot of your, your pressure issues in your system is your towers on the north end. And you look at way down at High Point, your pressures come from, it's a gravity fed, so if you imagine, that's in your system, so by the time it gets there, you're, you're facing those issues, so you've got those issues, you have some infrastructure issues, et cetera. And then also, your contract with Rockwall, they, their contract with Rockwall, so, I mean, it, it's sort of a, it's one of those things that you have to look at, all the different ways, the processes, I think, you buy water from City of Rockwall, and that's where it's coming from, so, that's where you really have to go back, like, get relationship backwards.
Yeah, it's all about relationships, and I don't think that R C H is, it doesn't seem in my eye that, that they've tried to maintain, or even encouraged, of positive relationships, and as far as volumes alone, they, they haven't submitted for increased volumes, where this area's been growing substantially, uh, and so, yeah, I, I, I understand. I understand what you went through is basically what we're going through, and you have the ability to make those corrections, which would facilitate certainly our, you know, our, our jumping into this, this, this arena.
Okay, I've got two more questions. One of those questions is, when we were there visiting through, I've got one of them that was, um, we talked about a diver, going in and cleaning out, yeah, your inspection, cleaning out, and scrubbing the things, how often do they do that? And how do you video, or, and do you send that to T C Q, or how does that work?
All your storage and, all your storage are elevated, we're required yearly to have it inspected.
So yearly?
Yearly, right.
And do you send that information to somebody?
No, that, what they'll do is they'll make a report, well, I, I get a full report from the company that we use. And they will send me video, whether they go in through cameras, or they send divers up into our elevator and inspect it. And then they will tell us, okay, we're good, or this needs work, or if there's sediment in our tanks, and it's X amount, they'll say, okay, this needs flushed out, and we set it up to flush out the tanks, and then you have to go through whole chlorination inspection, and you have to turn that in to T C Q showing. And that, pardon me?
Is that required?
That's required, yes, once we drain that, then we have to sit there and have that tested, and, and call back T samples to show that it's okay, it's passed. But we have to do that yearly, and then they'll take that, if there's any problems or issues, they will report that. It can come down to a lock on the top of a storage tank, so they're very thorough, very complete, and that you gotta make sure that you stay up on your, your tanks and your inspections, but we do that yearly, yes.
And what happens if you don't do that?
Um, I think that would tie into your T C Q, it would end badly. It, it, it would not be good, there would be fines upon fines, you'd probably shut down, you'd probably have boil orders.
Your healthier system is in jeopardy, pretty much.
It would, it would not be good.
And um, Adrian, would you, I don't remember what the status is of the, the league, and um, is it the league location for the R C H water tower?
Oh, okay, so the water tower, um, a few, few months ago, there was a time when, uh, the R C H's engineer came here to get, um, the site plan, and plowed through for the tower location to be at Edwards and League Road. Um, so, when I went to North Texas Municipal Water District, and we had a conversation, Tom Redd was also present as well, from, uh, Blackland, Tyler is there, um, we addressed, um, well, we asked some questions regarding that, like, what was approved, what wasn't approved. And um, a concept idea was sent in, you know, to say, this is the area that we were thinking about doing, can, you know, some hydraulics, can this be done? And they, they, they gave, yeah, it, it's doable, but that doesn't mean that it, that they got approved, like North Texas Damp or anything like that. Um, and there's a process they have not done, which is to become a direct customer with North Texas Municipal, Municipal Water District, and they have not done that. In addition to that, they have not acquired land, or done any of the, uh, documentation that, that will get you to that point, so, that's just.
Mostly correct, but, well, I think what she's talking about, she's talking about the water tower, which is not connected to the, it's not connected to the picture, to North Texas. Something to maintain with the president.
So there is.
If Texas wouldn't approve, that was a thing.
So there is a tower there though?
No, no, there was proposed tower, Eddie told me they had it proposed and then got canceled.
Oh.
Right. I don't, I, I mean, I know, I know they bid it, and I know there was a big delay, now, he told me it was canceled now, what the current status is then?
At the local level from y'all, it was approved, but as far as like, anything else after that, like quotes, or for them to do the bidding, all kinds of stuff, I mean, there's, it's just kind of dead in the water.
I got a question, um, if, as an entity that's providing, uh, you know, water to municipalities, to, to citizens, are y'all regulated to when, or if you can throttle that water back? Is it, is it like, if you're in a, you're in a deal one? Is it, is it like if you're in a, you're in a deal one day, everything's fine, the next day it's, it goes south? Can you, without notifying or anything, turn the water down to where it's throttled, where you have that pressure? And it's not, not because there's not water, but you're throttling it back so the usage goes back? Is that, is that-
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, no, but it, is that, is that something that's regulated? Can that be done without notification, just, just the cause or? Well, we, we just would, we were understanding that, that they were turning it down at, there was something being turned down at the deal because- Well, it was turned down when we were losing pressure at certain times of the day. But it's not something that has to be, it's not regulated or it's something that, it's a no-no to do that.
And so, one of the things that, um, I want to kind of, I don't want to sound like a Geico commercial or anything like that, but I did save y'all a bunch of money. So when we start talking about, um, items that we would need to get started, obviously, RCH has been very difficult in providing information. I mean, y'all asked for an audit reports, you know, several months ago, and that still has not happened. So I started the hunt to find the system that, uh, the, it's called a utility map. Um, and, um, this is, we officially have it back in twenty-twenty. I think that's the date, right? So it was last updated in October twenty-twenty. And so, we have the zone, regions, all that. So this is pretty exciting and, and I'm- This is what we feel because it's the engineers would actually have to look at this map to determine where things are and to be able to determine, you know, where they need to improve or do utility, it's called the, the valve marks and things of that nature. So, um, anyway, so I just wanted to share that with y'all. And I guess that the, to end this is that, you know, if there's anything that, uh, you would like to see more of, maybe, um, given, given the idea that, um, we are going to need, um, some sort of future agreements. Say, you know, we have a Tech Dot issue that's happening, that the utilities need to be moved by December first, twenty-twenty-three. Um, in addition to that, I mean, we don't know what we need to know and about the, the system itself. Um, and so we need to make some sort of, um, discussion, a really heart-to-heart discussion with RCH to say, you know, there's some things that you're not managing. And just even these documents alone that I'm sharing with you, you need to like share that, like this is what your, your person is, is sending in. I'm not sure if you're aware of that, but this is very concerning to you, especially as elected officials and what your oath is and public safety and things of that nature. I hope that this gives you encouragement that, yes, um, it is concerning, but there's, there's people here that are willing to help and, um, you can partner together. And, um, there is plans that would be able to, um, you can see a future in. And also, if the goal of becoming a, a direct customer with North Texas Municipal Water District, it's not going to happen overnight. There's a process. There's action that needs to be taken to get there. And, um, and I'm, I'm glad that they were able to come here and to be able to just give realistic, you know, you know, it's not high pie in the sky. They're just giving you real, um, experience from this. And it's very similar to what we just, what we're going through right now. And thank you so much for putting us on the agenda. I really appreciate it.
I have one last. No, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, sorry. Six point eight, update from the city administrator regarding Tech Dot correspondence regarding the relocation of water lines on State Highway two oh five.
Mayor and council, I'm, I'm really unsure exactly. This was not me that put this on here. However, I think it was mentioned that Tech Dot, yeah, RCH has some water lines, um, that are under the two oh five that potentially need to be moved. I have talked, talked to, to Walter Carrick, who's the field, um, engineer, um, for Tech Dot and, and Lane Selman, who's over the overall project. They don't even know where the lines are specifically. They want to do a layover of it. So it may cost, the cost of moving it may be more or less based on where they are, based on, on where Tech Dot is running the new configuration of two oh five. So they, they are anxious to get, um, something to do a layover and see where, and, and give instruction. And so, RCH can look and say, we need to move it over here or over here. Um, that's, that's where we are in that process. I mean, again, as, as these gentlemen, I think the, the engineer, um, stated, it's, it's RCH deal. Um, I don't know if the city can jump in there and say, oh, we're going to take this part of it, nor do we want to. So that's, we're in correspond-
Bottom line is that-
We're, we're in correspondence and this, and Tech Dot knows us. And we've discussed it. And so if they think that we can help out, and that's exactly what I told, told these gentlemen, if there's things that we can help out as a city to make this process work, please let us know. And we'll, we'll definitely bring it to the mayor and council to have them evaluate and participate if they feel that they, they should or need to.
Thank you for that update. All right. Before we go into six point nine, adjourned into, we will adjourn into executive session or closed meeting through Sonza Texas Government Code five five one point oh seven one one and five five one point oh seven one two, consultation with the attorney. And in executive session will be conducted to discuss and receive legal advice concerning pending litigation and or settlement order or on a matter in which the duty of the attorney to the government mental body under the state of Texas, just by rules of professional conduct of the state bar of Texas, clearly conflicts with this chapter relating to the following, City of Heath, City of Heath versus City of McLennan-Chisholm et al., cause number one twenty-two dash twelve oh four, pending in the three hundred and eighty-second district court of Rockwall County, Texas. The time is nine oh nine. We will move into executive session.
...
It's nine thirty-one, we're back from executive session. No action taken in executive session, moving back down to six point nine discussion of the City of Heath versus the City of McLennan-Chisholm. The cause number one twenty-two twelve oh four pending in the three hundred and eighty-sixth district court of Rockwall County, Texas. The time is nine oh nine, we will move into executive session.
All right. It's nine thirty-one, we're back from executive session. No action taken in executive session, moving back down to six point nine discussion of the City of Heath versus the City of McLennan-Chisholm. The cause number one twenty-two twelve oh four pending in the three hundred and eighty-sixth district court of Rockwall County, Texas. The time is nine oh nine, we will move into executive session.
All right. It's nine thirty-one, we're back from executive session. No action taken in executive session, moving back down to six point nine discussion of the City of Heath versus the City of McLennan-Chisholm. The cause number one twenty-two twelve oh four pending in the three hundred and eighty-sixth district court of Rockwall County, Texas. The time is nine oh nine, we will move into executive session.
All right. It's nine thirty-one, we're back from executive session. No action taken in executive session, moving back down to six point nine discussion of the City of Heath versus the City of McLennan-Chisholm. The cause number one twenty-two twelve oh four pending in the three hundred and eighty-sixth district court of Rockwall County, Texas. The time is nine oh nine, we will move into executive session.
All right. It's nine thirty-one, we're back from executive session. No action taken in executive session, moving back down to six point nine discussion of the City of Heath versus the City of McLennan-Chisholm. The cause number one twenty-two twelve oh four pending in the three hundred and eighty-sixth district court of Rockwall County, Texas. The time is nine oh nine, we will move into executive session.
All right. It's nine thirty-one, we're back from executive session. No action taken in executive session, moving back down to six point nine discussion of the City of Heath versus the City of McLennan-Chisholm. The cause number one twenty-two twelve oh four pending in the three hundred and eighty-sixth district court of Rockwall County, Texas. The time is nine oh nine, we will move into executive session.
All right. It's nine thirty-one, we're back from executive session. No action taken in executive session, moving back down to six point nine discussion of the City of Heath versus the City of McLennan-Chisholm. The cause number one twenty-two twelve oh four pending in the three hundred and eighty-sixth district court of Rockwall County, Texas. The time is nine oh nine, we will move into executive session.
All right. It's nine thirty-one, we're back from executive session. No action taken in executive session, moving back down to six point nine discussion of the City of Heath versus the City of McLennan-Chisholm. The cause number one twenty-two twelve oh four pending in the three hundred and eighty-sixth district court of Rockwall County, Texas. The time is nine oh nine, we will move into executive session.
All right. It's nine thirty-one, we're back from executive session. No action taken in executive session, moving back down to six point nine discussion of the City of Heath versus the City of McLennan-Chisholm. The cause number one twenty-two twelve oh four pending in the three hundred and eighty-sixth district court of Rockwall County, Texas. The time is nine oh nine, we will move into executive session.
All right. It's nine thirty-one, we're back from executive session. No action taken in executive session, moving back down to six point nine discussion of the City of Heath versus the City of McLennan-Chisholm. The cause number one twenty-two twelve oh four pending in the three hundred and eighty-sixth district court of Rockwall County, Texas. The time is nine oh nine, we will move into executive session.
All right. It's nine thirty-one, we're back from executive session. No action taken in executive session, moving back down to six point nine discussion of the City of Heath versus the City of McLennan-Chisholm. The cause number one twenty-two twelve oh four pending in the three hundred and eighty-sixth district court of Rockwall County, Texas. The time is nine oh nine, we will move into executive session.
All right. It's nine thirty-one, we're back from executive session. No action taken in executive session, moving back down to six point nine discussion of the City of Heath versus the City of McLennan-Chisholm. The cause number one twenty-two twelve oh four pending in the three hundred and eighty-sixth district court of Rockwall County, Texas. The time is nine oh nine, we will move into executive session.
All right. It's nine thirty-one, we're back from executive session. No action taken in executive session, moving back down to six point nine discussion of the City of Heath versus the City of McLennan-Chisholm. The cause number one twenty-two twelve oh four pending in the three hundred and eighty-sixth district court of Rockwall County, Texas. The time is nine oh nine, we will move into executive session.
All right. It's nine thirty-one, we're back from executive session. No action taken in executive session, moving back down to six point nine discussion of the City of Heath versus the City of McLennan-Chisholm. The cause number one twenty-two twelve oh four pending in the three hundred and eighty-sixth district court of Rockwall County, Texas. The time is nine oh nine, we will move into executive session.
All right. It's nine thirty-one, we're back from executive session. No action taken in executive session, moving back down to six point nine discussion of the City of Heath versus the City of McLennan-Chisholm. The cause number one twenty-two twelve oh four pending in the three hundred and eighty-sixth district court of Rockwall County, Texas. The time is nine oh nine, we will move into executive session.
All right. It's nine thirty-one, we're back from executive session. No action taken in executive session, moving back down to six point nine discussion of the City of Heath versus the City of McLennan-Chisholm. The cause number one twenty-two twelve oh four pending in the three hundred and eighty-sixth district court of Rockwall County, Texas. The time is nine oh nine, we will move into executive session.
All right. It's nine thirty-one, we're back from executive session. No action taken in executive session, moving back down to six point nine discussion of the City of Heath versus the City of McLennan-Chisholm. The cause number one twenty-two twelve oh four pending in the three hundred and eighty-sixth district court of Rockwall County, Texas. The time is nine oh nine, we will move into executive session.
All right. It's nine thirty-one, we're back from executive session. No action taken in executive session, moving back down to six point nine discussion of the City of Heath versus the City of McLennan-Chisholm. The cause number one twenty-two twelve oh four pending in the three hundred and eighty-sixth district court of Rockwall County, Texas. The time is nine oh nine, we will move into executive session.
All right. It's nine thirty-one, we're back from executive session. No action taken in executive session, moving back down to six point nine discussion of the City of Heath versus the City of McLennan-Chisholm. The cause number one twenty-two twelve oh four pending in the three hundred and eighty-sixth district court of Rockwall County, Texas. The time is nine oh nine, we will move into executive session.
All right. It's nine thirty-one, we're back from executive session. No action taken in executive session, moving back down to six point nine discussion of the City of Heath versus the City of McLennan-Chisholm. The cause number one twenty-two twelve oh four pending in the three hundred and eighty-sixth district court of Rockwall County, Texas. The time is nine oh nine, we will move into executive session.
All right. It's nine thirty-one, we're back from executive session. No action taken in executive session, moving back down to six point nine discussion of the City of Heath versus the City of McLennan-Chisholm. The cause number one twenty-two twelve oh four pending in the three hundred and eighty-sixth district court of Rockwall County, Texas. The time is nine oh nine, we will move into executive session.
All right. It's nine thirty-one, we're back from executive session. No action taken in executive session, moving back down to six point nine discussion of the City of Heath versus the City of McLennan-Chisholm. The cause number one twenty-two twelve oh four pending in the three hundred and eighty-sixth district court of Rockwall County, Texas. The time is nine oh nine, we will move into executive session.
All right. It's nine thirty-one, we're back from executive session. No action taken in executive session, moving back down to six point nine discussion of the City of Heath versus the City of McLennan-Chisholm. The cause number one twenty-two twelve oh four pending in the three hundred and eighty-sixth district court of Rockwall County, Texas. The time is nine oh nine, we will move into executive session.
All right. It's nine thirty-one, we're back from executive session. No action taken in executive session, moving back down to six point nine discussion of the City of Heath versus the City of McLennan-Chisholm. The cause number one twenty-two twelve oh four pending in the three hundred and eighty-sixth district court of Rockwall County, Texas. The time is nine oh nine, we will move into executive session.
All right. It's nine thirty-one, we're back from executive session. No action taken in executive session, moving back down to six point nine discussion of the City of Heath versus the City of McLennan-Chisholm. The cause number one twenty-two twelve oh four pending in the three hundred and eighty-sixth district court of Rockwall County, Texas. The time is nine oh nine, we will move into executive session.
All right. It's nine thirty-one, we're back from executive session. No action taken in executive session, moving back down to six point nine discussion of the City of Heath versus the City of McLennan-Chisholm. The cause number one twenty-two twelve oh four pending in the three hundred and eighty-sixth district court of Rockwall County, Texas. The time is nine oh nine, we will move into executive session.
All right. It's nine thirty-one, we're back from executive session. No action taken in executive session, moving back down to six point nine discussion of the City of Heath versus the City of McLennan-Chisholm. The cause number one twenty-two twelve oh four pending in the three hundred and eighty-sixth district court of Rockwall County, Texas. The time is nine oh nine, we will move into executive session.
All right. It's nine thirty-one, we're back from executive session. No action taken in executive session, moving back down to six point nine discussion of the City of Heath versus the City of McLennan-Chisholm. The cause number one twenty-two twelve oh four pending in the three hundred and eighty-sixth district court of Rockwall County, Texas. The time is nine oh nine, we will move into executive session.
All right. It's nine thirty-one, we're back from executive session. No action taken in executive session, moving back down to six point nine discussion of the City of Heath versus the City of McLennan-Chisholm. The cause number one twenty-two twelve oh four pending in the three hundred and eighty-sixth district court of Rockwall County, Texas. The time is nine oh nine, we will move into executive session.
All right. It's nine thirty-one, we're back from executive session. No action taken in executive session, moving back down to six point nine discussion of the City of Heath versus the City of McLennan-Chisholm. The cause number one twenty-two twelve oh four pending in the three hundred and eighty-sixth district court of Rockwall County, Texas. The time is nine oh nine, we will move into executive session.
All right. It's nine thirty-one, we're back from executive session. No action taken in executive session, moving back down to six point nine discussion of the City of Heath versus the City of McLennan-Chisholm. The cause number one twenty-two twelve oh four pending in the three hundred and eighty-sixth district court of Rockwall County, Texas. The time is nine oh nine, we will move into executive session.
All right. It's nine thirty-one, we're back from executive session. No action taken in executive session, moving back down to six point nine discussion of the City of Heath versus the City of McLennan-Chisholm. The cause number one twenty-two twelve oh four pending in the three hundred and eighty-sixth district court of Rockwall County, Texas. The time is nine oh nine, we will move into executive session.
All right. It's nine thirty-one, we're back from executive session. No action taken in executive session, moving back down to six point nine discussion of the City of Heath versus the City of McLennan-Chisholm. The cause number one twenty-two twelve oh four pending in the three hundred and eighty-sixth district court of Rockwall County, Texas. The time is nine oh nine, we will move into executive session.
All right. It's nine thirty-one, we're back from executive session. No action taken in executive session, moving back down to six point nine discussion of the City of Heath versus the City of McLennan-Chisholm. The cause number one twenty-two twelve oh four pending in the three hundred and eighty-sixth district court of Rockwall County, Texas. The time is nine oh nine, we will move into executive session.
All right. It's nine thirty-one, we're back from executive session. No action taken in executive session, moving back down to six point nine discussion of the City of Heath versus the City of McLennan-Chisholm. The cause number one twenty-two twelve oh four pending in the three hundred and eighty-sixth district court of Rockwall County, Texas. The time is nine oh nine, we will move into executive session.
All right. It's nine thirty-one, we're back from executive session. No action taken in executive session, moving back down to six point nine discussion of the City of Heath versus the City of McLennan-Chisholm. The cause number one twenty-two twelve oh four pending in the three hundred and eighty-sixth district court of Rockwall County, Texas. The time is nine oh nine, we will move into executive session.
All right. It's nine thirty-one, we're back from executive session. No action taken in executive session, moving back down to six point nine discussion of the City of Heath versus the City of McLennan-Chisholm. The cause number one twenty-two twelve oh four pending in the three hundred and eighty-sixth district court of Rockwall County, Texas. The time is nine oh nine, we will move into executive session.
All right. It's nine thirty-one, we're back from executive session. No action taken in executive session, moving back down to six point nine discussion of the City of Heath versus the City of McLennan-Chisholm. The cause number one twenty-two twelve oh four pending in the three hundred and eighty-sixth district court of Rockwall County, Texas. The time is nine oh nine, we will move into executive session.
All right. It's nine thirty-one, we're back from executive session. No action taken in executive session, moving back down to six point nine discussion of the City of Heath versus the City of McLennan-Chisholm. The cause number one twenty-two twelve oh four pending in the three hundred and eighty-sixth district court of Rockwall County, Texas. The time is nine oh nine, we will move into executive session.
All right. It's nine thirty-one, we're back from executive session. No action taken in executive session, moving back down to six point nine discussion of the City of Heath versus the City of McLennan-Chisholm. The cause number one twenty-two twelve oh four pending in the three hundred and eighty-sixth district court of Rockwall County, Texas. The time is nine oh nine, we will move into executive session.
All right. It's nine thirty-one, we're back from executive session. No action taken in executive session, moving back down to six point nine discussion of the City of Heath versus the City of McLennan-Chisholm. The cause number one twenty-two twelve oh four pending in the three hundred and eighty-sixth district court of Rockwall County, Texas. The time is nine oh nine, we will move into executive session.
All right. It's nine thirty-one, we're back from executive session. No action taken in executive session, moving back down to six point nine discussion of the City of Heath versus the City of McLennan-Chisholm. The cause number one twenty-two twelve oh four pending in the three hundred and eighty-sixth district court of Rockwall County, Texas. The time is nine oh nine, we will move into executive session.
All right. It's nine thirty-one, we're back from executive session. No action taken in executive session, moving back down to six point nine discussion of the City of Heath versus the City of McLennan-Chisholm. The cause number one twenty-two twelve oh four pending in the three hundred and eighty-sixth district court of Rockwall County, Texas. The time is nine oh nine, we will move into executive session.
All right. It's nine thirty-one, we're back from executive session. No action taken in executive session, moving back down to six point nine discussion of the City of Heath versus the City of McLennan-Chisholm. The cause number one twenty-two twelve oh four pending in the three hundred and eighty-sixth district court of Rockwall County, Texas. The time is nine oh nine, we will move into executive session.
All right. It's nine thirty-one, we're back from executive session. No action taken in executive session, moving back down to six point nine discussion of the City of Heath versus the City of McLennan-Chisholm. The cause number one twenty-two twelve oh four pending in the three hundred and eighty-sixth district court of Rockwall County, Texas. The time is nine oh nine, we will move into executive session.
All right. It's nine thirty-one, we're back from executive session. No action taken in executive session, moving back down to six point nine discussion of the City of Heath versus the City of McLennan-Chisholm. The cause number one twenty-two twelve oh four pending in the three hundred and eighty-sixth district court of Rockwall County, Texas. The time is nine oh nine, we will move into executive session.
All right. It's nine thirty-one, we're back from executive session. No action taken in executive session, moving back down to six point nine discussion of the City of Heath versus the City of McLennan-Chisholm. The cause number one twenty-two twelve oh four pending in the three hundred and eighty-sixth district court of Rockwall County, Texas. The time is nine oh nine, we will move into executive session.
All right. It's nine thirty-one, we're back from executive session. No action taken in executive session, moving back down to six point nine discussion of the City of Heath versus the City of McLennan-Chisholm. The cause number one twenty-two twelve oh four pending in the three hundred and eighty-sixth district court of Rockwall County, Texas. The time is nine oh nine, we will move into executive session.
All right. It's nine thirty-one, we're back from executive session. No action taken in executive session, moving back down to six point nine discussion of the City of Heath versus the City of McLennan-Chisholm. The cause number one twenty-two twelve oh four pending in the three hundred and eighty-sixth district court of Rockwall County, Texas. The time is nine oh nine, we will move into executive session.
All right. It's nine thirty-one, we're back from executive session. No action taken in executive session, moving back down to six point nine discussion of the City of Heath versus the City of McLennan-Chisholm. The cause number one twenty-two twelve oh four pending in the three hundred and eighty-sixth district court of Rockwall County, Texas. The time is nine oh nine, we will move into executive session.
All right. It's nine thirty-one, we're back from executive session. No action taken in executive session, moving back down to six point nine discussion of the City of Heath versus the City of McLennan-Chisholm. The cause number one twenty-two twelve oh four pending in the three hundred and eighty-sixth district court of Rockwall County, Texas. The time is nine oh nine, we will move into executive session.
All right. It's nine thirty-one, we're back from executive session. No action taken in executive session, moving back down to six point nine discussion of the City of Heath versus the City of McLennan-Chisholm. The cause number one twenty-two twelve oh four pending in the three hundred and eighty-sixth district court of Rockwall County, Texas. The time is nine oh nine, we will move into executive session.